Mayor Baker.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Here.
Councilmember Marshall.
Present.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis.
Present.
Councilmember Danuski.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
If you please, rise and join Councilmember Curtis.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. If there are no changes or modifications, um... Approved as written. If anyone on the agenda has citizen comments, this is not a community expression of views on issues that are important to you in the community. We ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. There will be a timer screen behind you. While the clerk please call the first person.
Vicki Grayland.
Hi, I'm Vicki Grayland and I live in Kenmore. And I'm here to talk about the budget and the environment. As you consider next year's budget, I'd like you to please consider the environment and remember that a budget is a moral document. First, artificial turf and artificial lighting at St. Edward State Park are still environmentally and fiscally irresponsible. Instead, let's make a place in our city budget for solutions to climate change. I encourage the city to join the King County Cities Climate Collaboration. The group that I'm working with, People's Climate Action, is holding a climate summit next month for both citizens and elected officials. It will be about two hours on a Saturday morning, probably November 17th. As soon as we have a venue and more information, I'll email that to all of you. You're all welcome. We'll have a speaker to explain what other cities are currently doing to successfully meet their carbon reduction goals. Our neighbors to the south, Portland, have been very active and very successful in reducing carbon emissions as their city grows in population. And we at People's Climate Action have a suggestion for the K-4C. We'd like them to spend their money hiring some experts to come up with a plan with specific actions that will have measurable results to reduce carbon. We have no leadership at the national level. It falls on all of us to find the answers and solve this problem, and I truly believe we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graham.
Elizabeth Mooney.
Hi, Elizabeth Mooney, 5934 Northeast 201st Street. I'm here to encourage you and thank you as a city staff and a council for what you did -- I think it was in 2015 or 16, you set up, I think it's called an inter-local agreement, correct me if I'm wrong later, for working with Puget Sound Clean Air Agency and using our code enforcement, um, officer Craig Lum at the time. My understanding, I called City today to find out and hopefully meet Debbie Honstein, and I would like to ask to work together with the city at getting the word out to citizens because as Perk President, People for Environmentally Responsible Kenmore, we want to continue what we started last July with the city and with Robin Evans Agnew at Tacoma with the STEM students that came up from Tacoma to do air monitoring. We want to get the word out to the citizens that when they smell those noxious fumes coming from the C-Mex that are not monitored, we want to continue this effort and get citizens to know that they don't need to just call me or complain at Starbucks where I met up with the Caldwell's last weekend, or Patrick O'Brien this morning who had to suck up the fumes and get a headache at seven -- eight o'clock this morning. Seven thirty is when the Caldwell's smell it because their office is right over there. We need people to know that those are not healthy. And the only way we're going to do it is, as the mayor said a year ago to the kids who are in this room, we need more voices. People have just given up fighting C-Mex and they need to be on alert. So I want to let you know that we were successful. I don't know how many people know, but I just found out today from the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency that the C-Mex people were charged $27,000. They just paid it. It was thanks to three citizens and our city code enforcement agent corroborating the complaints of the honors, the Ostroms worker, and the people at Vintage over by Ichiban that had an antique store. They couldn't breathe. The asphalt fumes made them have to go in and use their inhaler. It's even written down that it causes cancer. And the point is that the city started something and we need to continue it because those three complaints happened thanks to our citizens helping those people get the word out to the city. The city's corroborating evidence allowed them to charge for three complaints, $9,000 each. They tried to get out of it. It happened in 2015 and they only paid it in July 2018. So we've been sucking those fumes and we need to continue it. So hopefully in your budget, you will continue with that inter-local agreement. And I would love to meet Debbie Honstein and get the word out more, um, you know, brightly to the citizens so they'll call me or call whoever so we can work together. And also, please do not change the St. Edward Park grassy.
Ms. Mooney, we're at three minutes.
Please save our public money and leave it grass and don't do an artificial turf at St. Edward Park. Thank you.
Matt Lacy.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I am here, uh, not as a resident, but as a rowing coach for the last 25 years, uh, who's been involved with these students, though they don't know me yet, uh, that are here representing the rowing team from Inglemore. Uh, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank council, um, and Mr. Carl Lindsay for their vision, uh, in chasing this project. I've been a part of the boathouse committee, uh, that's been working on trying to bring this boathouse to reality. I know you're going to deliberate tonight. Um, and I'm just here as an advocate, uh, not only for these students, but for the following generations of students to come. There are about 100 young men and women rowing, uh, right now, uh, just about between, uh, three of the high schools in the North Shore School District. But over time, uh, we're going to see hundreds and then thousands. And tonight, you're going to deliberate on a building that ultimately is going to serve generations, uh, of students and residents. And so I know we're going to be knocking around some numbers, but of course, I definitely have an eye on, uh, the long ball. I think there's a chance, uh, here to enable the residents of Kenmore to capture their involvement with the lake, um, not by looking at it, but by defining their involvement by being on it. And I think that's, uh, just a precious opportunity. Waterfront access is so preciously scarce. And here's an opportunity to truly allow generations, uh, of not only students, but adult members of the community to, uh, engage the lake in a way that they really haven't been able to yet. Uh, so simply on behalf of the students that are here tonight, uh, participating in a public process, good work. Uh, but for the generations yet, uh, that are going to be able to engage in the sport of rowing because of this boathouse, uh, I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lacy.
John Hendrickson.
Good evening, John Hendrickson, Kenmore, Washington. I have a few comments related to the budget that was presented to you last week by the city manager. The first handout I gave you is, is a copy of the, um, pavement maintenance and rehabilitation plan from 2010. Now, the city manager told you last week that you've been paying about $500,000 a year for your pavement overlay. And when, in fact, for years, our studies have told us that we needed to be up at around 1.8 million. So in 2010, it's highlighted there, they were suggesting 1.8 million in overlay. And if you go back to 2008, it was 950,000 a year. And the city was only choosing to spend about 500,000 a year. And, um, in fact, with the issue with this seemed to be resolved, the city hired a different consultant. And I think the council really needs to look at that. And if you, maybe you paid someone to give you some bad advice, which is what you wanted because you didn't want to admit that liability that we have every year. And you know, if we don't, if we don't, if we don't keep our pavement maintained, the whole road breaks down, you have to redo the road bid. It's extremely expensive. Okay? Uh, for 20 years, the city's been underfunding according to these reports. And I think you need to look at what happened with the new consultant if it wasn't deliberate, if there's not some kind of corruption there. Okay? Second thing I have is the city manager talked about the sales tax, that we don't have a lot of sales tax, and we lost our sales tax equalization. Now, I gave you, the second handout I gave you is a copy of the feasibility study that showed a surplus for 2001. We incorporated 1.7 million. And the second page there shows you those two numbers. It gives you a net income of 1.7 million. However, the last page, I show you where it says the sales tax equalization when we incorporated should never have been relied on in the first place. It said the city would be relying quite heavily on sales tax equalization from the state of Washington, which generally speaking is not a situation we advocate. Because of the possibility of amended legislation in Olympia that could affect sales tax equalization distributions, it appears to us predictable that the city's revenue from this source will diminish over time. So, two key adjustments from that study in 2001 where we told all the citizens how much surplus we were going to have. One, the police contract was well understated by 600,000. So take that from your actual report, adjust that out. Take out your sales tax equalization. Instead of a $1.7 million surplus, you have a deficit. Our original feasibility study, you know, what's the difference between negligence, gross negligence, and fraud? New, or you should have known, uh, you know, a willful disregard.
Mr. Hendrickson, we're at three minutes.
This is, this was always known. This is nothing new that we don't have sales tax. We, our, our per capita income is the bottom 20% of the county. We've always known it. We pay our road taxes, you don't admit to it. You say we don't pay road taxes. We paid over 90 million.
Mr. Hendrickson, we're at three minutes. Kathy Huffman. Okay, nobody else has signed up, mayor.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else wishing to be heard? Thank you for your comments, Ms. Graham and Ms. Mooney. Mr. Hendrickson, thank you for your comments on the budget. Mr. Lacy.
Thank you. It's really good to see these students here. This council has been a big supporter of the rowing team. And certainly when it started at Inglemore, it was a shock. The first year out, I think there was almost 70 kids that signed up. We now have three high schools that are participating. So, uh, in just its second year, it's really expanded. And I, I know the council is pleased to, uh, to be able to have this here in our city, to be able to support these kids and be able to, uh, to help provide them the potential scholarship opportunities that are going to come from their participation in rowing. So, um, thank you guys for showing an interest in the sport. And I know that we have an interest here and the whole rowing program, I think, started because of Councilmember Shrubnik and her involvement in the early, in the early going. So, uh, and, and Matt, I, I realize that, but you deserve some credit here too. So thank you all very much and, and we will be talking about the boathouse later tonight. All right. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
And I'll second. Is there any, uh, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, consent agenda stands approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 18-0466, temporary homeless shelter. Ms. Owseley.
I have a quick comment or question, if I could. Since we have all these, um, kids here in the architect, do we want to move the boathouse discussion up on the agenda?
Well, we certainly can.
Just a thought.
No, and it's a good thought. Is there general agreement to move this up? So hold off.
Sorry.
Yes. So let's go ahead and do that. That's a good idea. I wish we would have caught it a little early, but let's bring item number C up in front. Rhododendron Boathouse Project Update and Action on Funding and Timing for Boathouse Option. Ms. Bent. And Ms. Stanton, our Parks Project Manager, and Ms. Mand is our Community Development Director.
Next steps, oh, here we go. In the design of a boathouse for rowing shells at Rhododendron Park. The walkways and waterways bond issue provided funding for the Parks.
Does your mic turn on?
I will project, how about that? Okay, all right. As you know, the walkways and waterways bond issue provided funding for the, for the park's water walk and the parking upgrades that we built last year. With the new boarding float that you can see here, uh, we now have the necessary infrastructure to support the proposed boathouse. A citizen advisory committee experienced in building rowing programs worked through the design process with the city and our consultants. And would members of the committee please raise your hand when I say your name and, and consultants? They include the George Pocock Foundation's Executive Director, Matt Lacy, whom you've heard from, Kenmore North Shore School District's Athletic Director, Lance Gatter, Kenmore Rowing Clubs Director, Pam Marshall, K-Wax Liaison, Sherri Baker, Don Marshall, and Ryan Monahan, and the consultant team of Neil Jorgensen of J3 Architects, and Nina Glavachi and Terrell Osborne of Osborne Consulting. So, thank you, thank you all. And as you know, we have high school rowing program participants here tonight, which I didn't do. Slide two. Okay. Here's a site plan of the project area. And north is to the right in this plan. The new parking and water walk are shown, the float is in blue, and the yellow rectangle is the footprint for the 40-foot by 70-foot boathouse. Geotechnical investigation shows that a traditional foundation here would crack and settle, and so the committee strongly recommends that only a pile-supported foundation is considered. Both the options before you tonight rely on the pile-supported design. And this is why the smaller option 4B was developed in order to stay within the adopted budget. We needed to find ways to cut other things and other, in order to get that pile-supported foundation. So here is, the concept identified as option 4B, the upper one, which fits within the current proposed budget of $505,000. And the structure is basically half the width of the originally proposed building. It will provide a single bay of storage racks for 14 boats instead of the originally envisioned two bays. And 14 boats can serve up to 126 participants at a time to serve the district's goal of 400 alternate day schedules and outdoor storage of 20 to 26 more boats would be needed. The second concept, option 2B, which we, we did this one earlier, found out how expensive it looked to be, so we, that's why we ended up with the later option of 4B. But the 2B costs out the 40-foot by 70-foot structure as envisioned during early design development in 2013, but which does exceed today's budget. It provides racks for 20 boats and an upstairs area for, uh, other uses. An additional $196,000 in funding is estimated to be needed in order to construct a basic larger building in 2019. This design is supported by the advisory committee as better meeting the needs of rowing programs. It can serve up to 180 participants at a time and to serve the, serve 400, it would also require an alternate day schedule and outside storage of between 3 and 20 boats. So both options provide for a future second floor mezzanine to be added later, and this could be used for, or would be used for rowing machines, team meetings, and coach areas. Both options are basic buildings, and there are a number of add-ons which are shown separately. These could be bid as additive alternates or built later as funding allows. So the detailed project estimates are included in your agenda packet. The city manager's experience with, with capital projects supports what he calls a 50% experience factor. And to be included here is a rule of thumb or a kind of a reality check to account for the potential that the project would cost more than estimated currently. This factor has been applied to the add-ons here as well as the base amount for grand total for each option. So the Robb's Experience Factor would indicate a project budget needs of 885,000 and 1.5 million for the two options, well over the current anticipated budget of $505,000.
So, and so is the 1.052, is that option, what option is that?
1.052, that's option 2B, that's the full 40-foot by 70, 40, 40-foot by 70-foot building, excuse me.
Okay, and that's, and then, so, but if you put on add-ons, then it brings it up another half million?
Yes, and, and the add-ons are listed on the next slide.
Okay. All right, so the left, okay, I got it. Left side is 4B and right side is 2B, okay.
Right, so right now, our anticipated project budget for the half building or the, the, um, 20 by 70-foot is $480,000. We, right now, it looks like we could get out the door. That's what we would spend on the project. To do the full building, we anticipate, just the base without the add-ons would be $700,000.
So do you have any cost of what the foundation would be to, to build a foundation for 2B, but only build 4B for now?
Yes, we did. It was, if I remember right, it was at least $50,000 more to build the full 40-by-70 foundation. Yeah.
So for, for the 50,000, we could build 4B but be ready for 2B?
I'm looking at my engineer back there, yes. 50,000 plus the incremental increases for sales tax, 1% for the arts permits, things like that, yeah. So again, listed on the left are the add-ons that we, we, that would bump the project budget up. We could, we could live without them, uh, in the near term especially. So I wanted to give you that information.
Deputy Mayor has got a question here.
Oh, certainly.
There is just a restroom right around on the other side by the boat launch though, right?
There is a restroom right around by the boat launch, and there's one at Rhododendron Park at the other end of the boardwalk.
Okay.
Yeah, the question becomes if you're going to build an enclosed building, are you required to have a, something of a restroom inside or not? So, yeah, if we didn't need to build it, we wouldn't.
And Brian Hampson can weigh in on this, but, so if you're just, if you're just building a boat storage building that just stores boats, then I don't think you need to build a restroom. But if you're, but if you're creating meeting space and workout space and things like that, do you need a restroom?
Councilwoman Shrubnik.
I just have a question because the, the materials that we were given at the beginning say that the 20 by 70 can accommodate six shells, and then later it says 14 shells.
Yes.
So I understand those may be different sizes. I just want a little clarification.
I, I picked up on that just in time. I went back and looked. The original six was using very conservative spacing, like 42 inches vertical distance. So when they tightened those down to 30 inches, and, and some of the boathouses we visited were actually only 26 inches apart. 30, yeah, the, the 14 and 20 numbers are, are reasonable.
Okay. Thanks.
I'm glad I caught that too. Okay, let's see. Okay, so, this is, this is why we're here. We would like to know from the council. First question, can you select an option or give us direction on which option we should proceed with? And, because we, we can't continue designing both, we don't have that kind of funding. And then the, the second question is, shall we proceed with design and permits now, including alternates in the design for a certain amount of flexibility or cost control? Or do we wait a year to secure the funding we need for either, you know, for, for the larger building before we continue, uh, design? And, and I, there are two things, two factors that I wanted to point out. One was that the shoreline permit is good until 2020. We can do construction in 2020. It actually expires in April of 2021, but that's not a good building season. So we should get it done by the end of 2020. And then the, the state capital budget is through 2019. So if we're under construction now would indicate to me that we could get a reappropriation of any unexpended amounts or unreimbursed amounts. But, but if we weren't even begun, we might not be in as good a position to have that reappropriated.
Councilmember Curtis.
So just some general thoughts first. I'd rather move ahead sooner than wait. And every good idea is in competition, in competition with every other good idea. And as we're looking at our budget and getting that ready for November, there are a lot of competing interests this year and, and more challenges maybe than usual. I like the option of the 4B with the addition of building the foundation. So as long as you plan your next stage well, um, sometimes that's all you can afford. But there's a logical, uh, next stage, and it's just a matter of staging the project, it's not canceling the rest of the project. It's just staging. And a lot of big projects that you can't afford now, that's a good way to handle it.
Councilwoman Shrubnik.
The 2B, the 40-by-70 option, um, would that allow room if you weren't using all of the space for storage of boats? Would that also accommodate potentially ERG practice in the wintertime, things like that? I know that the school is running into problems being able to accommodate that, so, um, I just wonder if that could work that way.
Okay, we, we understand that ERGs is electrical devices need to be protected from the weather. I would say if the, if, if option, if the 20, you said the 20-by-70, is that right?
Well, I was looking at 2B, which I think is the 40-by-70.
Oh, yes, okay, the 40-by-70. If it, yes, if it had the metal siding, then yes, there would be room. It would be, it would be a question of pulling them out into the aisles and pushing them back when they're done. But yes, it could accommodate that as long as we added power.
And the 20-by-70 would not. Is that a fair statement?
Well, yes, it would not. And it also has the problem of not being weatherproof, so it wouldn't be suitable.
I thought the 40-by-70 was two-story.
It's room for a mezzanine, so it, I think it's 18-by-20-foot upstairs area for the ERG machines and coaching space and meeting space, which we wouldn't, we, we haven't designed that in these options. We haven't shown the cost.
I don't think you need electricity for ERGs, do you?
They don't plug in.
They don't plug in anywhere. You don't need electricity for them.
Oh, okay.
They're strictly physical exercise.
Okay, the ones, the ones we saw at, maybe I assume something I shouldn't have, but the ones we saw at the Lakeside Rowing Center had electricity because they had plugins for chips to, to read their output.
Oh, yeah, well, I think the ones we're using are not that advanced.
Yeah, there is it. Well, yeah, but I think that's just a little battery.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. I knew they, I saw they had outlets and everything in that floor, so, okay.
Councilwoman Danuski.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, if we went with option 2B and waiting to see if we can get additional funding, we're not asking for any more money from the city. We're giving them time to get additional funding on their own. I don't, I don't, under potential funding, I don't see city. So is that a correct statement? Basically, we're just giving them a little bit more time to find some more money? Okay. And if we did go with 2B, um, could you revert if they don't get money fairly easily?
Could we do what now? I'm sorry.
Revert back to a 4B type option if you don't get the funding?
No, that's the difficult part. We, we, that's why we need to pick an option now. We can't really, it's a different, you know, different design by the time we get, get it designed.
Do you have any comments on chances of getting these potential funds? Do you have any comments on chances of getting these potential funds? Is this just pie in the sky, hoping, are there good chances?
I, well, we have, we did very well with the youth sports grants for the St. Ed's, and so it may mean that the city would apply for the youth sports grants for this project.
And that's the county funding, correct?
Yes, King County, yeah, the youth sports grant, that's the King County program, so that's, that would be something the city would be the applicant, but the George Pocock Foundation would fill out the application for.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
Just a quick comment on the funding piece, my understanding is that, you know, it's a pretty good shot for this particular funding announcement, but I think the other piece is, you know, we're short, what, for the option 4B, it's about $200,000, something like that, give or take, that's not an insurmountable, or, that's certainly not an insurmountable amount of money to raise potentially in other ways as well, so I, I think.
I know we had.
Other options.
We had discussed with the school district, is that option still on the table, or has that disappeared?
Yeah, we, we have it under current, it's, it's not 100%, but we're fairly confident we're going to see $250,000 from the school district.
That would certainly help in building 4B.
Mm-hmm.
That, that's already included under the $505,000.
That is, okay.
Yeah.
So I guess I, I'm certainly in favor of building the foundation for 4B, so the funding is available, you can, you can sort of add it. And it looks like the, the design of the open-sided building could be enclosed, if funding were to appear.
True.
So, Councilmember Curtis.
So what happens if we don't get any money from the school district, so then we only have half of even the 4B?
We don't have enough money to build either one.
I guess I just have one other comment, is, you know, I've seen a lot of projects, and if you get something that kind of works, you go on to the next project and the next project, and sometimes these phase things never end up getting completed, so I guess I'm a little more interested in the 2B, since it's not asking for funds from the city, and it's just giving basically some extra time to fundraise.
All right, so we're looking for some decision, Councilmember Smith.
I still do not have clarity on if we, if we choose option 2B and funding is not secured, then what happens?
We don't go out to bid.
So, okay, just, the, the project is completely dead then?
I, I think there's a couple of options with the larger option, you either say, put the project on hold until the fundraising has been completed and you've got the full amount of funds completed, or, another option would be to say, if there's direction to go with the larger option, use the funds which are currently allocated for the design, to get you through the design process, but only construct if you get those additional funds, so there are sort of two subsets to the larger option, I think.
Okay, and, and to take it a step further, so if you, something like some of these add-ons in the design process, and I'll just use restrooms because they're an obvious one because of the plumbing infrastructure, but if you design something, assuming you don't have it, and now you want to come back, you, you, there would be no construction started, it would strictly be a design component, and then you just redesign it?
Right, I think that's probably, and another thing to think of, too, is both these buildings do not include any of the add-ons, and so again, it would be helpful if there was direction, should we proceed with the design for some of the add-ons, as we're in the design process, it's easier to do that during the design, rather than wait till, you know, later, and then say, can you redesign it to add it in?
Right, so for me, just to kind of let you know, I, had we already not committed millions in taxpayers' dollars to other water infrastructure improvements that we're doing down there at Twin Springs, I'd be a little more apt to consider the, the larger one, but I, I am reluctant to knowing that, I feel like there's so many unknowns, and I do see this as a, kind of one of these project creeps, where I feel like, once we go down a level of commitment, I'm concerned that all of a sudden, it's, we're going to be at a point where nobody's got the money and we need $450,000, and who's going to, you know, we're the obvious people that, you know, the city's the one everybody will look to, so I am concerned about that, and, and basically for that reason, I'd be more apt to build the larger pad for, that would accommodate the, the 2B, but pursue the 4B option.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
How do we, are we entertaining motions? I'm not quite sure of our process.
Yes, we are trying to give them direction, direction on option 2B, 4B, proceed with design permits now, with alternates for flexibility, or wait a year, secure funding before we continue to design. Those are our choices, Councilmember Curtis.
I did have one question before I'd like to make a motion, but, so what are we doing in the meantime? So how is the program working with no place to store the boats?
Right now, the rowing programs, both of them are operating out of Log Boom Park, they have a fenced area, and they just launch off the beach, so that's what's happening now.
All right, so I would like to make a motion that we do 4B with the addition of the extra pad to be ready for 2B when more money appears.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, so, is that enough direction for you? Or, okay, so we'll start with, with which option we want. So the motion then is the pad for 4B, and proceed with design on 2B.
We're in discussion.
Okay.
Yes.
My understanding is 4B is the, the.
Is the structure, and 2B is the pad?
No.
No.
So 4B with an add-on.
Right.
The add-on being build a pad.
Right.
For a 4B eventual, a 2B eventual, but that's not a 2B, we're just building the pad while we're out there drilling piles.
Okay, so this is, we're only talking the pad, we're not talking a building now?
Correct.
Okay.
Add, add be prepared for that next stage.
Fine, so.
Physically, I'm thinking about phasing this project.
Fine, so no structure, we're talking about pad?
No, 4B has a structure.
Okay.
4B has an open-sided, half-width structure.
With a 2B pad.
With the 2B pad.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay. So the motion in front of us is to build, or to, to have the 2B pad and build this, design the structure as the 4B structure until additional funds come in. That's the motion, and we are certainly just talk to it. Councilmember Smith.
So I realize in this motion, we have to come up with an additional $50,000 or so, isn't that what I heard the approximate cost of that is, and so that is something that I'm not thrilled about at all, and I would expect if we do it, that we don't have to look at building the structure or changing a structure ourselves, that that can be done with other options, but I'd be willing to do it to at least do some sort of, you know, lay a foundation for a future better facility.
Councilmember Shrubnik.
And, and just to underscore, so if we went with this option that's proposed, and funding became available to build the larger, I mean, we would not have the design, we'd have to take the other one down, I mean, it seems short-sighted to me.
No.
It's a little unclear, okay.
What we would have in, under this motion is we would proceed with the design to go out to bid for the full 40 by 7 pad, but only the 20 by 70 building.
Yeah.
Right.
So in order to add the 20 by, other 20 by 70 part, we'd have to start over, get a new design for that one.
Right.
Yeah.
But you wouldn't tear down the old structure, you would add to it.
Correct, we designed 4B so that's half a 2B.
Right.
Right.
Basically, you don't waste anything. All right, so, the motion in front of us is to build the pad for 2B and the structure 4B to design. Clerk, please take the role, if there's no further discussion.
Councilmember Danuski?
No.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Um, yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Five yeses, so passed.
Five-two. All right, now, so you, I guess you have the option.
We have the option, yes.
You have the option of 4B with a pad built for 2B.
And we can proceed and design it to the existing budget.
So now the question then remains, do we want to wait a year to secure funding, or do we want to go ahead with the design now?
That's correct, that's the question, and we will have to fundraise for that additional $50,000.
Right.
It's out, okay.
Councilmember Curtis.
So my understanding is, the 4B option happens sooner, the 2B option happens later when funds are.
Correct.
Are, are secured, so, so we don't have to wait.
No.
With the proposal we just adopted, we can start designing.
We can, yes, we can, we can proceed.
While we're trying to raise that extra $50,000, or while the group is trying to raise that extra $50,000.
And get the money from the school district.
Right. But that's already been figured in.
Yes, yes, and I would like to say that we, actually, our cost estimate for the smaller one, 4B, is actually about $30,000 below the adopted budget, so the shortfall really is closer to $20,000, so that should be doable through a George Pocock or youth sports grant application, both of those should come in, in time for us to build it, that we wouldn't have the award information for the youth sports grant until April or May, which is after the time we'd want to go out to bid, so there is, there's a little exposure there.
Okay, so, I guess the question is, do we want to wait or we want to proceed now, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I'm still confused then.
Yeah.
I thought with what I proposed, it was do it now, that 2B was the one that was going to be delayed, so the 4B is not to be delayed, it's build this thing as fast as you can, realizing it's only really part of the full project that we want.
Yes, the reason that was, could have applied for both, is if you wanted to do the add-ons for either one of those, we would have had to get more money, but, but you're right, you're right, we, we can proceed with the design.
So then it's assumed that we want to build this thing now, any disagreement with that?
That's my assumption, yet this, they need, they need it sooner than later.
It won't ever get cheaper.
No, it, it certainly won't, and these kids deserve someplace to keep the boats, rather than having to march them into the water from the shore.
And more, more to the point, I mean, you know, we're going to be in construction at Log Boom in the next couple of years as well, so I mean, the, the location that they're currently in is, is not tenable, so.
It's always been temporary, so.
Right, exactly, so, but I, I, it is my understanding that the part of the rationale for choosing the 20 by 70, and, you know, albeit with a larger footprint, is to get it done more quickly, I.
Okay, so it looks like we're all in agreement, do it now.
Agreed, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, guys, now go, go and do what your, your superintendent, Michelle Reed, said, got a championship in four years now. Thank you, guys, all right. Come back then to A, ordinance number 18 dash 0466, temporary homeless shelter, Ms. Owlsley, Mr. Hampson, and Jack is not with us.
I am getting him on the phone, Mayor.
Uh-oh.
You have reached the voice.
Well, you got to get up the money now, Derek.
Well, they're applying, I assume, they're still going to apply for the grant, yeah.
You wrote, yeah, down from.
Yeah.
I checked it.
Rob, do you want me to?
I'm good for now.
He's hiding.
That's weird.
Uh-huh.
Hey, Jack, welcome to the city council meeting.
Thank you.
We do have, we do have a life-size cardboard cutout at your presenter's table, but we, we will, are just getting started, and I am joined at the presenter's table by Brian Hampson, Chief Horvath, and Rob Carlinsey will be joining in the discussion of the proposed ordinance number 180466 for temporary homeless shelters. So I will just begin the discussion tonight, that, I'm sure you remember, September 24th, the council discussed proposed ordinance, asked that, and voted on several changes to the, to that proposal, which have been made in the ordinance before you. They are, number one, outlining a process for how the council would review and approve cold-weather, low-barrier shelters and temporary homeless shelters if more than one program applied to operate in Kenmore in the following year. The second change was to allow cold-weather, low-barrier shelters to operate for 31 consecutive days instead of 30, which was in the original draft, and third, for cold-weather shelters, require sex offender and felony warrant checks for prospective people who would be using the, the service. So with that, I would like to also mention that on September 24th, representatives from Lake City Partners were here that evening, spoke with them today, and, and they are not able to join us tonight, and in the couple of weeks since the last meeting, we have had a chance to confer a bit with King County staff further about some of their requirements for, for funding, particularly the low-barrier, cold-weather shelters. So with that, was Rob or, or anyone else at the table wants to make any, any remarks, we'll take questions.
Well, so we are bringing back the ordinance exactly as you directed, one twist has. One twist has come around since we last talked, and that is, we found out when, when they call for warrant checks, the county can't distinguish between felony and misdemeanor. Nevertheless, we're still bringing the ordinance to you as you directed.
Councilmember Curtis?
I think there's an inconsistent, excuse me, an inconsistency in calling it a cold-weather, low-barrier shelter if you've added a barrier. So I'm okay with calling it a cold-weather shelter and require the warrant checks and sex offender checks, but you can't have both. So you have to take everywhere that phrase is in there, that needs to be subtracted out to be internally consistent.
Fair enough.
Well, can I, what if you're not checking for misdemeanors? So county system aside, if you're, if you're not checking for misdemeanors, could you still call it a low-barrier shelter?
Hellus?
Medium barrier?
Councilmember Shrubnik?
I had a good conversation with Mark Ellerbrook today, who's the head of All Home. And he, just to be clear, low barrier is an approach. There's no hard and fast rules about that. The funders, including King County and Seattle and other funders, encourage certain approaches to minimize the barriers, such as not doing certain kinds of background checks, not having stringent rules about alcohol, drug, those kind of things. Each program makes their own call, and at some point, if there are too many barriers, the funding, funders say, you know, that really isn't the approach. Mary's Place, for example, used to have an approach that wasn't considered low barrier. The county's worked with them for a number of years to reduce the barriers. And so this isn't a hard and fast rule. I think if the intent is to have low barrier, we can use that vernacular. I'm comfortable with taking it out or keeping it in. I don't think that's the point. I just want to make another point, that there are other places that have, and Bellevue in particular, he called out, as having dealt with this exact issue three years ago. And I know the city is considering that. I don't, you know, it's, the timing's kind of unfortunate that we didn't have that information. And yet, here we are today trying to make a decision. You know, my personal preference would be to delay this until we get more information from our surrounding cities, all of which have cold-weather, relatively low-barrier shelters. Not just Shoreline, not just Seattle. This is not information that we had before us. And I, I think, I mean, literally, all of our surrounding cities have similar kinds of shelters. And they're all dealing with this. So I think, I, you know, it would be great to have more information. And some of them, including Bellevue, which again, Mark talked about in more detail, dealt with this in terms of regulating through the zoning about where low-barrier shelters could be. That's an approach I'd like to at least consider. So I'm, I'm not sure what to do with this, except to say that I have reservations about pushing this forward. The only good part about pushing this forward is we are at least not left with the lack of any policy. So I, I mean, I would be okay with moving this forward in whatever condition it is, with a thought toward, you know, let's revisit this when we have more comprehensive information about the low-barrier shelter in a few months, maybe. So that we can kind of get back on track before the applications come in for next fall. I mean, clearly, this isn't, what we're doing now is not going to impact anybody until the applications come due. So, you know, we do have a little bit of time to revisit. Sorry, that was a long speech. Oh, and, and I do want to make one other point, that Lake City Partners is not the only game in town in terms of shelter providers that do this kind of work. There's lots of others. So that church, or another church, or another entity could take it upon themselves to work with a different provider. So, yeah.
Can I clarify a question? So you learned that our next-door neighbor cities all have cold-weather shelters?
Most, I mean, Mark's quote was "most cities." They literally have hundreds of shelters across the county.
Okay, but, so I know Lake Forest Park doesn't. I checked that with the city administrator just the other day. And Bothell's ordinance is so stringent that they require background checks. So I don't think Bothell does. And, oh, and I talked to the Shoreline City Manager, and they do have a low-barrier shelter, as we all know. And I asked her if there's regulations surrounding it, and she said, "No." And I said, "Well, do you at least make them come in for a temporary use permit?" She said, "Nope, no permit, no regulations. They just come, and it hasn't really been an issue in their community."
Councilmember Smith?
Thanks for the clarification. I appreciate it. I would encourage us to at least adopt the policy if we want to come back and approve, or make amendments to it at the future time, fine. But we've had this come now before us, this is probably the fifth time. And I think it's time to, to get on with it and, and keep moving forward. I also would say that I think cities will continue around us to evolve in their policies, and we may too, but I think we created a policy that is very fair and reasonable and meets a, a reasonable expectation for the community. And, and so I would encourage us to pass it.
Councilmember Curtis?
I do have a question that it might be addressed in here, but I couldn't find it. So it just says that the sex offender and the warrant check will be done. But is it every night they show up, or do like, once a month, good enough? It doesn't state. I mean, I would imply that it's every single night. If they come for 30 nights, we have to do that check 30 times. Because it doesn't say it's good for the rest of the month.
As it's currently written, it says "before admitting a potential resident." So my understanding is, if the same individual comes back, he's already been admitted into the system and wouldn't have to go through that process again. As long as that camp is in that facility. So if John Smith comes in on a Monday, and John Smith comes in on Wednesday, but is out on Tuesday, John Smith has already been vetted by the organization and would not have to go through the process again.
Okay. Does that need any clarification anywhere? Or is that clear to everybody else except me?
That's kind of the way I envisioned it, but...
Because it'd be obviously a waste of time to do it every single night.
Right.
That, that's what makes sense. But I guess if, if there was an easy phrase that could be added that says what admitted means. So, once, once they come in once in that month, they're, they're good for the month.
And I believe we would have the discretion administratively to make that call and to define that.
I would also just point out, too, that, that people can enter the system, the county system of, of people who are served by shelter providers. So that would be kind of a, a way of, of keeping track of who is using the, the shelter system, by, you know, by whomever providers are being funded by a, a public agency.
Does, it doesn't sound like, though, if they were admitted another month to some other place in the system, we'd count that. It has to be the month that they show up in Kenmore. That they're, we call it, admitted means that.
Right.
Your honor, so Bellevue had looked into, so this is regarding the, the warrant check issue. So Bellevue, with their low-barrier shelter, had looked into another option other than formally checking their warrants, and, and they were going to do some other way that wasn't quite so difficult. So Chief Horvath called his counterparts down at the City of Bellevue today. Can you tell us what they were trying to do and what they finally ended up doing?
So they, they have been working on a process to try to vet low-barrier admitties or intakes without going through the 911 center. And according to the Assistant Chief, they were not able to come up with a system that was constitutional. And so they have dropped that whole process at this point. The only thing that they require right now for the low barriers is the sex offender check. A sex offender check can be done through an online, publicly available website. So any organization can go online, either through the King County Sheriff's Office, which has a link to that website, or it's a national website, and enter a name, and it will populate whether that individual is a registered sex offender. The same can be done for a paid-by-usage or by-contract method for warrants and criminal history checks. It just depends on whether that organization wishes to set up an account with one of these general search engines that will do background checks and warrant checks and so forth.
Deputy Mayor, then, Councilmember Smith?
So Chief, coming on that same topic there. So earlier, City Manager Carlinsey said that the county didn't have a way to really only search for felonies when they're doing a background check. What would the sheriff's office response be to doing a check and seeing that somebody has a misdemeanor warrant out for them?
So the communications center's standard operating procedure is, they will accept the call from the shelters. They'll enter the name into the crime information system, the Washington Crime Information System, as well as the national database. And that checks for three things, actually. It checks for four. Driving status, criminal warrant status in the state of Washington, national criminal warrant status, and sex offender status nationwide. So all of those queries go out at the same time, all of them return at the same time. The dispatcher will see, or the call receiver will see what comes back. But the standard operating procedure for, again, confidentiality reasons to a non-involved party is to only divulge that there's a warrant in the system or the person is a registered sex offender, not what kind of warrant is in the system. At that point, the call receiver will send a call over to the dispatcher, who's in the appropriate area. And deputies, officers will be dispatched to respond to the location where said warrant person is.
Okay, so let's say we do get a shelter here who locates, and they follow our ordinance here that is only asking for, you know, we're only excluding felony warrants. Somebody comes in knowing that that's how we're set up, the check is run, they maybe have a misdemeanor warrant out for them. We're going to be sending over police officers to pick them up from the shelter. Is that correct?
That is correct, because that's what Washington State requires of all law enforcement agencies to do.
No, I appreciate it.
It's a court order, or an order by a judge, to bring that person into custody before the court.
No, I just, I, I just want the clarification. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Actually, he covered my exact question.
Councilmember Marshall?
But Chief, isn't that, I mean, I see in my line of work all the time, there's a check in criminal proceedings to check with another jurisdiction that has it, for instance, a misdemeanor warrant out, and say, "Do they want to extradite?" But no such option here, or do they normally not?
No, that is correct. So upon officers arriving at the scene, they are required to verify whether that outside agency, for instance, Bothell, does want to extradite said party. And we have to wait for an answer for them before we actually take them into custody.
One other question. So this, and this system was by 911 calling in. Was there any sense whether our, our applicants or anybody would be able to have access to the usual JIS system or the JAB system, actual court system that we see? Or is maybe that's not available to non-court entities?
There is a system available called the WATCH program. It's offered by Washington State Patrol. It's only a criminal history. It does not divulge whether there are active warrants in the system.
So, just to use Lake Forest, Lake City Partners. Suppose they call from their offices down there. They know their, who is going to be staying in the shelter next week. They've got a list of people. They do the, the checks on them. And one does come back, you're not going to go down to Lake City Partners.
That is correct. We will not go into the City of Lake City.
Therefore, they can run the checks before they even come here and say, you know, "We advise that you don't go to this shelter," or whatever.
That is possible.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Curtis?
But it sounds like if somebody just shows up in Kenmore, if, if we require the warrant checks, then it will follow the procedure that the, the chief outlined. So yes, there's a way, a workaround, by them going to Lake City first. But people don't know about that. They're just cold. And they want a place to sleep.
Well, I mean, that's the purpose of this.
I guess, I don't think that people are coming in here cold. They have to get here with their bus ticket and get processed. So I, I think that they're not just walking in off the street.
Councilmember Smith?
At least in this model.
Chief, is a, is a warrant a public record?
Yes, it is.
So what is the invasion of privacy, or the privacy concern that you referenced? I'm just trying to piece that together.
I, I'm not sure what Bellevue developed and why they came out that way with their legal advisors, but that was the answer that was provided.
Okay, thanks.
I notice that there's very little mentions of weapons checks. It says they're not allowed, but I don't see that there's any actual weapons check. Was that by design?
Can Jack answer that? Jack, are you there?
Yes.
Did you hear the mayor's question?
I didn't hear his question.
I noticed that there is nothing specific about a weapons check. It just says weapons and drugs and alcohol are prohibited. But I don't, didn't read anything about an actual check. Is there, there's no requirement for that, right?
That's correct. That's correct. And so that, that would likely come down to what the shelter's policy on that is. Like, the Lake City Partners shelter has taken the stance of, if they see a weapon, then they'll take it, and there will be a punishment tied to that, like the resident can't stay the next night, or something like that. But yeah, they're not actively searching and checking people at that specific shelter. So again, with what we have, there's just the code of conduct. And then whatever the shelter's policy would do would be what would currently dictate that.
Yeah, Councilmember Smith?
So I actually interpret it a little differently. I, I think it's irrelevant what the shelter's policy is. We say in here, "You can't have weapons." So their policy, I remember, says it can't be visible. Well, that doesn't, that's not what ours says. You can't bring a weapon. So they, there should be no weapons in the homeless shelters.
All right. Any further questions? The chair will then entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 18 dash 0466.
Moved.
Been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Councilmember Curtis?
Was that with the term "low barrier" removed? Or the word "low barrier" is still in there?
That is with "low barrier" still in there. If you want to make an amendment, you can.
May I comment?
Yes, please.
I think, I think for the purposes of our ordinance, we can define "low barrier." And since we're not requiring misdemeanor check, that could be "low barrier" for Kenmore. And therefore, keep in, keep the term "low barrier" in the ordinance.
I guess the question is, if "low barrier" means, if, if somebody's defined it to mean a certain thing, and then everybody, every entity in the whole Peters town defines it different, that's fairly confusing. I mean, maybe we could call it "minimal barrier," or do something to distinguish it from a word that somebody's already coined and given a definition to. And, and, and argues with people and twists their arm to gradually make them believe in "low barrier." So minimal barrier?
Or ru- reduced barrier?
Reduced barrier, low, you know, but something other than a term somebody's already defined. So we can find... So we can define anything we want if we come up with the word ourselves. So maybe I'll make an amendment to the motion, that we change the term "low barrier" to "minimal barrier"?
Is there a second? I'll second for the sake of discussion.
And my argument would be, "low barrier" is already determined, and it does not include sex offender checks and background checks.
Councilmember Smith?
I would say we, it's a more recent enough term that we have enough flexibility in being able to define it as we wish, and in some ways, I would hope more cities would define it closer to the way we are defining it. So for that reason, I would vote against it.
What else? All right, so we have a motion on the table, and that motion is to amend the main motion to include the word "minimal barrier" and remove "low barrier."
Give me clarification, minimal or minimum?
Minimal.
Minimal. Where "low barrier" put a "minimal barrier."
All right, so there's a motion before us to change the word "low barrier" to "minimal barrier." Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Mayor Baker?
No.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
No.
Councilmember Danuski?
No.
Fails three, four.
Four, three.
Or four, three, excuse me.
All right. Back to the main motion on the table, to approve Ordinance Number 18-0466 as written, dealing with temporary homeless shelters. Deputy Mayor.
I've stated my objections at previous council meetings with us adding requirements and kind of taking away the low barrier option. I just want to be clear that a vote for this ordinance is a de facto ban on Lake City Partners and North Lake Lutheran from hosting the winter shelter that they hosted last year successfully with no incidents, and that they're going to be hosting again in November. This will also scare off anybody with any sort of warrant, regardless if it's a misdemeanor or felony, because of how the background check system is set up, from seeking shelter in Kenmore. I do appreciate the certainty that this gives for future tent cities who want to locate in Kenmore, we're setting up a good framework for that, and I appreciate that, but I can't support this ordinance because it literally leaves some of our most vulnerable people out in the cold.
Any other questions, discussions? Councilmember Shrubnik?
As I said before, I'm going to vote to push this forward, only to give us some framework to work with, but I also have a problem with it, and I would like to be able to get to yes within the next six months. So I will definitely be doing my own homework and hopefully working with others to do more homework on this.
And I feel very strongly that one of our primary missions as an elected official is to provide for the safety of our community, and I just can't have a group of people being bused in without some sort of check, so. Any further comments, suggestions? Clerk, please take the roll.
Deputy Mayor Herbig?
No.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
No.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnik?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Passed five, five-two.
Five-two. All right, next item on the agenda.
Thank you, and thank you, Jack.
Resolution 18-312, adopting additions to the city's personnel policies to establish standby pay and adopting additions to the administrative policy and directives to provide safety footwear allowance.
You're welcome.
Mr. Izizi.
Mayor, can I make one clarification before Ben starts? It would be 18-313, it was a numbering error, so 313, please.
18-313, not 312 as written.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, your honor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager and counselor. I know you have a long agenda item, it's a big item, it's coming up, the city budget, so I'm going to try to be as efficient, as quickly as possible on this item. As a kind of background, that we have been working on interim public workshop and maintenance and operation division. City of Kenmore contracts most of maintenance and operation activities to private and public contractors. We will continue to contract a big chunk of our activities, but one of our biggest contractors since our incorporation has been the City of Lake Forest Park. This contract has worked well for us for the last 20 years, but due to changing needs of each city and the increased demand on the services, both cities have mutually agreed to perhaps start doing their own maintenance and operation divisions. To that end, in May, we received a letter from City of Lake Forest Park that they notified us that they will seize their services effective December 31st of this year. You have asked us to put together a City of Kenmore Maintenance and Operation Division Plan, implementation schedule, and associated costs. We have reviewed that with you in two council meetings, one in study session in August, and then the September 10th, the council actually authorized the city manager to proceed with the implementation of the plan. Since then, we have been working very hard with your staff to develop job descriptions for the new maintenance workers, working on the interim shop sites, SSR 522 Shell property, which we will come to you with a permit application sometime soon, and a few other items, particularly the post office remodel project, the back of the post office for office space. City manager asked me to also take a look at our existing policies, if there are any gaps in our policies for the new division, that we need the council's direction. We did that. So two areas that we have identified that we need to make additions to our personnel policies and administrative policies. And those two areas are standby pay and safety clothing allowance. What are they? Standby pay is that you would ask a public works and slash parks maintenance worker to be on call after work hours during the weekends and holidays to respond to emergencies. And we compensate those employees for daily basis, and they have to be available to be respond to any emergencies within 30 minutes of a phone call. That's one of the reasons that we compensate them, because we restrict them their movements of off-work hours. This is not a new pay for us, we have been paying for this as part of our contract, the Lake Forest Park, Lake Forest Park had a standby employee, and we compensated them as part of our annual contractual payments. Second item is the safety boots. Washington Administrative Court requires us to provide safety boots for employees that are working outside and exposed to hazards. And this, this is a policy that they uniformly pretty much adopted for all cities, and this is one area that we also need to make some adjustments to our existing policies. Developing this kind of policies, in terms of the cost of them on annual basis, they're very small in relative to overall operation of the division. For example, the cost of our standby call and the cost of our safety boots on annual basis will be about, less than about $20,000. It's about $19,200, that's what we anticipate. But yet, these are very important and visible policies for the employees. So we want to make sure that we provide something compatible with what's being provided around us, but we also need to be financial conscientious that we don't want to take, lead the market in that regard. So we check and review the policies of the four cities surrounding us, that's Bothell, Kirkland, Kenmore, and Shoreline. Of those four, three have union labor contracts, there's quite a bit pages each one of those contracts. We looked at them, and we find out what they are paying, and based on that information and the statement that I just made earlier, we're recommending something for you to consider. In terms of the safety wear, City of Kirkland provides $200 every year, Lake Forest Park provides $500 as needed, not more than once a year, Bothell provides $250 per year, Shoreline has no policy that we can find. Shoreline, by the way, doesn't have a union contract, they do have administrative and personnel policies. We did review the administrative policies, I couldn't find anything in the Shoreline in that regard. I'm sure there's somewhere else in one of those resolutions and ordinances, I just couldn't find it readily available on that. Standby pay is all over the map, Kirkland provides 15% of our rate, and 25% our rates, depends on if it's the holidays or the regular weekdays. Lake Forest Park provides $40 per day, and $30 during the emergencies. Bothell provides $45 per day, Shoreline provides about $1.50 per hour, so that corresponds to roughly about $27 per day. Reviewing those, reviewing that information, looking at what our neighboring cities, sister cities are providing, we're proposing that we provide $250 maximum per year, safety wear allowance based on a reimbursement basis. If an employee wants to buy a more expensive boot, believe it or not, I didn't know that, you can actually spend upwards of $500-plus on the safety boots. But we think that $250 is a sufficient amount of funds to buy a good safety boot for our employees. And then we also, we are also proposing for you to consider that the $45 per day on standby employees is a compensation. Should you, we're here to get your input and answer any questions, and should you agree with that recommendation, we do have a accompanying resolution for you to consider, that's the Resolution Number 18-312.
Three. Resolution 18-312.
Yeah, the number was actually incorrect, Ben, I apologize, it's 313.
Thank you. Councilmember Curtis?
So, couple of questions. On the standby pay, I was curious why it was $40 per day and then less, $30 per day during emergencies? When you're more likely to get called out on an emergency, like storm and ice conditions, why pay them less? I'm just curious.
This was a outlier when I look at everybody else's policies. You do have a general City of Kenmore policy, just as many other cities, that is, during the emergencies, all employees are on standby status. Bothell does that, Kirkland does that, as well as Shoreline does it. But Lake Forest decided to do is that, in addition to one employee's being in standby, they wanted to put all maintenance workers on perhaps more secure standby status by giving them $30 per day during emergencies, like it's an open ice removal event.
Okay, then my second comment is on the safety boots. So I wear work boots in my new profession, and I can't, I like red wing work boots, and they aren't even steel-toed. I'm not sure you can get a decent work boot for 250 bucks. It cost me more than that, even without the steel toes. So I'm thinking more like the $300 range might be closer to actually covering a decent boot.
Fair enough.
Did you do any research on what boots cost when you looked into this?
I actually looked at on the Amazon and a few other places, and it's been a while since I dealt directly with that issue, but you can actually spend upwards, almost $400 to $500. You could buy for your seasonal employees, which I think we're going to do probably what Bothell does, a reasonable safety boot that would last for about three months in seasonal work, 150 bucks. But I think the council member Curtis is right, that we were actually internally debating on this issue, should we do 250 or 300, and 300 would give a little extra to get the boots that desire for the employees, so.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I actually was going to ask the same question that Councilmember Curtis was asking, I was actually flipping through Zappos right now, looking at, looking at boots and steel toes, and there's a decent selection here of things that are under $200, I'm not opposed to going up to three, because we'll have to dress up at some point. Anyway, my question is actually, so is this just cash given to the worker, or is this something where they purchase it and then submit for reimbursement?
It will be based on reimbursement basis, so if somebody wants to spend more than 250, or if you agree 300, more than 300, they pay out of their pocket, they bring the receipt, but they get reimbursed from the city for up to that amount as approved by the council.
Okay, thanks.
Then give some discretion also to operations manager, that particularly for seasonal employees and summer, summer helps.
Mr. Hampson? Do you have something to add?
Yes, I had a comment. Even though we don't have a policy here in Kenmore, we do provide work boots for our inspectors and field workers in our department, and have been since I've started working here. And that price range has kind of changed over the time that I've been here, it started, I think, about $150, seemed about reasonable, it went up to $180, but like we're seeing and hearing, people are buying 250 to 300 boots and have to pay the rest out of their pocket. And when they're looking for these, they have steel toe, steel shank, or appropriate, you know, they have other materials now that can use as alternative to a steel toe or shank, but then comfortability too, once you get into those, it's up there in the $300 range.
Councilmember Curtis?
I would just comment, in my research, you can have two boots that look the same on Amazon, but when you ask the red wing guy, "How's this one made and how's this one made?", this one's made overseas with all the cheapest material you can get, and this one's made with all the quality stuff that's actually comfortable. So it makes a big difference on wearability.
I actually recommend 300, because it's a small gesture that could go a long way with our, with the morale.
So, we can just ask you to do 300, we don't need a modification, an amendment to the ordinance? Do you want to do an amendment just to make it?
Just the resolution, I believe it says 250, we just need to amend the resolution to state that 300, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so let's just start with that one then. So the chair would accept a motion to change the resolution to go from 250 to 300.
I'll make motion, I'll make that motion to change Resolution 18-313 to increase the price of the safety boots to $300.
I'll second that. Deputy Mayor, one second. Okay, Deputy Mayor, seconded. All right. Any further discussion? I think we can do this one with, all those in favor to increase from 250 to 300, say aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously, okay, next, then the chair will entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 18-313. Next, then the chair will entertain a motion to approve resolution number 18-313.
The moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that, I'm not hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All right. Any further discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Danuski.
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis.
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall.
Yes.
Councilmember Shrubnek.
Yes.
Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herbig.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Passed.
All right. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, the one we've just been waiting for all night long. Presentation of 2019, 2020, proposed by annual budgets for general fund revenues. City Council, City Manager, City Clerk, Finance and Administration, Legal, Non-Department, Public Safety and Development Services, City Manager, Mr. Carlinsey, Assistant City Manager, Ms. Housley, Finance Administration, Ms. Gregory, and City Clerk and Police Chief Horvath, and Development Services Director Brian Hampson. Boy, we got them all. All right. So, just for clarification and to remind people of how we've done it and sort of inform the new people on how we do this, we're gonna cover each section and we're gonna either, we're gonna approve that section or work that section through until we do approve it and we're done with it. We won't go back to that without some extenuating circumstances. So with that in mind, here we go.
And Your Honor, we put that long list on there, just in case we could cover all those tonight.
Yeah, right.
And.
Wishful thinking.
But if it does get laid and we haven't covered them all, we can send the ones that aren't covered to a future council meeting. But we put them on there for the public's benefit, just so that we could cover them if we, if they went quickly.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yes, we do have a large team here tonight and we'll sort of do this in segments, because first I want to give you a preview of the general fund revenues and then we'll move into the departments. And as we come upon some of the department discussions, other folks will come to the table to present and answer questions about their department budgets. Does that work?
Works.
Okay. And I would like to just make a caveat as we go through the sections, that there are questions that we can't answer, for instance, as we get to a certain one. You know, I'd like to be able to bring those back at the next meeting, even though I know you do like to review a section and get through it and move on. But sometimes there are questions that we could, we could bring up or answer at the following meeting. Is that okay?
Okay.
Okay. And also because we have two new council members and this is the first budget book that I've provided to them and then it's a new budget year for everyone. Are there any questions about the document itself or how it's laid out or should we just dive into the details?
I actually, I'm trying to find what I'm looking for now, but I liked the way that the table of the different programs with the dollar amounts that were allocated to each of them, the way that was laid out, is that, that appears to be different. Is it different in some way that, it just seemed easier to read or to go through this time in a lot of ways than I remember in the past?
The tables that are with each department?
Yes, exactly.
Yes, that is new. That is new. It seems like every two years it's gonna, it's new and different.
Okay.
But, and we just got that information before we printed the budget, so I thought that might be useful for starting off or bringing up a PBB discussion, which we'd like to incorporate more as we go through these presentations.
Yeah, so it was, it was actually just a compliment because I just thought it was, I just felt it easier to work through.
Good.
And so.
Because I think what we did two years ago, we just had a long list of all the city programs, wasn't, they weren't differentiated by department necessarily. And this helps us talk about those PBB programs in the context of a department, which makes a, has a lot more relevance. Okay, well, as you know, tonight we're going to try to review the general fund revenues and several of the departments in the general fund. And that would include everything from the city council's budget, city manager finance and administration, city clerk, legal, public safety and development services. And I think that's actually very doable tonight. It's a lot earlier starting point than last week. So I will start with the general fund revenue and I'm really only going to hit the high, the high points, the major revenue sources, but if you want to talk about something that I don't present, that would be fine too. So I wanted to compare for you where we started with the 2017, 18 adopted budget. We only amended that so far this biennium by $72,000 and those amendments were during the two budget amendments that we made in 2017, some for code enforcement recoveries, reimbursements on the St. Edward Lodge environmental impact statement, and then reimbursement from DNR for that abandoned boat removal. So that brought us to $23,605,000. Our projections for the biennium are revenues of $24,513,000 and this is higher than the budget for a few reasons, including building permits being higher in 2018, or at least our projections include that. Property tax receipts greater than we had budgeted. Our water and sewer franchise fee revenues are also greater than we budgeted by about $200,000. And in our general fund, you will see that we have some projections for reimbursements on the Lake Point project. And these are, these are not just standalone revenues, they are actually an offset to expenses that we have in the departments too. But I believe our agreement with Lake Point is that many of our costs are reimbursable up to a certain point, so we've included the revenue and expense in the, in the budget. So for 19 and 20, our revenue budget's $25,877,000 and this does include a property tax increase of 3% of the levy in both years, 2019 and 2020. That brings in $730,000 of revenue, additional revenue. We have been aggressive in our overhead reimbursement calculations of administrative staff costs and passing costs to the capital projects wherever we can for the engineering and park project managers. And again, the Lake Point potential reimbursements. And all those increases are somewhat offset by development revenues being a little less than we budgeted in 2017 and 2018.
Do you want, excuse me, do you want questions? Do you want to go through this?
Yeah. Yes, yes, I'd like to take questions as we go.
Okay. So I have a question on the 3%. So I assume that's, that's the 3% they showed, then that's a compounded number, so it's including then it would be 6% in two years total. From where we are today.
Well, it does, it does compound. So the first year you raise it 3% from the levy to 3% more and then the next year, the levy goes up another 3%. So, yes.
So do you know offhand, because it is compounding, it isn't a simple formula, do you know approximately how much additional revenue is resulting from each 1% increase?
Approximately, yes. So I calculated the first year, the increase or the amount of additional levy revenue that you would gain by taking 3% over 1%, and that's $97,000.
So.
So it's 40, about 48.
About 48, okay.
Per 1%.
Okay, thank you.
And then in the second year, that additional overtaking 1% goes to 198,000. That's where you see that compounding.
Right.
Increase come in, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilmember Curtis and Deputy Mayor.
So I had sort of a, I guess maybe it's a philosophical question on this 3%. So for years, early on when I was on council, we were not taking the increase and we were banking our capacity. And then we, for a couple of years, just took the 1%. And now here we are, calling on our bank capacity. So something has clearly changed from my early years on council to how it is now. And I guess the question I'm asking the council is, has our appetite gotten bigger than our budget? So we do, you know, we like to do stuff. We like to be, you know, accomplish things. And have we gotten to a point where eventually we'll use up all our bank capacity and still be short? And I know there's discussion in the book about the, being in the type of city we are and all those things, but part of it, we were in the same kind of city back when I, or 10 years ago, and we were not using our taxing capacity that we could. So it feels like something else has changed besides just the things that are stated in this budget book. And I'm thinking the council's probably the responsible ones, because we're the ones that keep saying yes. We like this one more thing and we'll just add $200,000 here and we'll add some more money there and we'll add a new project and at some point we need to say no. So that's more of a philosophical thing. I'm not sure I have a specific question to apply it to, but things have definitely changed in my 10 years on this council.
So I just want to clarify, the 3% you're taking each year, that's just, that's, over the two years, you're taking four years of bank capacity over the two years? Is that correct?
It's calculated more in terms of dollars that you're taking than years. It comes to about $295,000 of the almost $600,000. So you're taking about half of it, actually. So really, over four years.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Since Councilmember Curtis said it is a philosophical discussion and a council discussion, I think it's worth having a discussion because I remember asking this question and we'd talk about the lines of revenue and expenses and it was, Brent, don't worry, it always, we never get there. We are continually getting there and we're doing a lot more than we were when I started. I can just, and it's, it's not a bad thing, it just depends how you want to look at it. And it costs more because we are doing more and we have a city manager that is very efficient about getting things done. And so I do think it's a discussion worth having and I do think we need to rein it in a bit.
Can I add some thoughts to that? So I do think there's an underlying cause of just status quo expenditures rising faster than the revenues we're bringing in. So even if you did not add one more thing to your budget, one more program, one more position, if you added nothing more to your budget, you're still gonna have your lines cross in approximately 2021. That said, it is true that things have been added over the years. So for example, when Kirkland annexed North Kirkland, we were forced to add a police officer to provide the two officer minimum coverage because we were sharing coverage with the unincorporated county officers. So we added a police officer back in 2012 and we've also added a volunteer and event specialist and we've added a finance tech, 2011, 2012. So we've added different positions over the years to keep up with workload demand, but also to enhance the services we provide community, the community. This budget also includes the incubator, which has a net cost of about 100, a little over $100,000 a year. Nancy, correct me if I'm wrong on that. So we have added things. They haven't been huge things, they haven't, but they have been incremental things and they do add up.
Deputy Mayor.
Joanne, do you, and I know I've seen this number before and I didn't ask you this ahead of time, so you don't off the top of your head, that's fine, but what, to the average homeowner in Kenmore, what does the 1% translate to in their property tax bill? And I apologize for throwing you this curve ball. I should have re-watched the meeting before I was elected in 2012 when Bob Hensel went over all this with you in depth, but it was quite grilling, I remembered, it was interesting.
Well, I mean, thinking back to the, like the average home cost, let's say now it's $500,000. The rate is roughly around $1.13, I think, this last year.
So we're talking 1.3 cents per thousand?
Yeah, 1% is not, is not very much. And when the, you know, the AV is rising, the rates are dropping and, in fact, the way in my calculations this year, because the assessed valuation is continuing to rise, even a 3% increase in the levy, the rate would be lower than it was last year. But if you'd like some of that historical information, I keep track of it.
I just think it'd be helpful because a lot of people, when they hear about a 1% increase, they're thinking about a 1% of their total property bill.
Yes.
And we're talking about 1% of the city's portion, which is, what, like a third maybe of somebody's property tax bill?
Of the total property tax bill?
Yeah.
Oh, it's about 12%. 12%.
Okay, so we're talking about 1% of 12% of your property tax bill. And I would frankly argue that we wouldn't be in this bind that we're in right now if past councils had just taken the 1%. The way that the initiative that Tim Imman passed was, it was set up in such a way to tie our hands so that our revenues would, so our lines would cross. You know, tying one of our biggest revenue sources to, so we can only increase it at a rate less than inflation is setting ourselves up for failure and that's what he did with that initiative. Not taking the 1% for nine years was a huge, may not have been a burden at the time for the city, but long term, the revenue loss just from compound entry, you know, just from the compounding effect and everything else is substantial. I don't think we'd be having this conversation right now if we, you know, if past councils hadn't done that for nine years straight. I think, yeah, we probably do need to catch up. We do need to make sure that we're spending our money wisely. But as city managers kind of spelled out, you know, we're set, we're in a place right now where, without looking at a lot of other stuff, we're not gonna be able to pay the bills in a couple of years and I think the property tax is a fairly low-paying way to do it, especially if we're just talking a couple percent here, as such a small part of that. So I don't have a problem with this proposal.
So as our, as our second mayor, Dick Taylor used to say, that 1% is a cup of coffee a day. Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, I, so it is, I mean, I just calculated approximately, for the 3% increase is approximately for the average household, I think it's about 20 bucks is what it factors out to, just so you know. But, but that misses what I think is a bigger point. And the bigger point is that, had we been taking the 1%, we would have increased our costs because we would have had probably a higher level of fixed costs slowly creeping in and variable costs and, and then you're in more of a bind because you then, you're stuck at the 1%. And this point, if we, if we use 50% of our bank capacity, but we don't structurally change how we're doing approaching business, we're just gonna be in this exact same position in a few years, but then we won't have options. And that's, I think that's a fundamental difference. I agree, I actually don't so much have a problem with the 20, or the additional tax amount. I have more of a problem with the fact that we're just continually spending too much relative to what we're taking.
And I think if former councils would have taken the 1%, we would have spent it and I think we might have been still been in the same position.
Exactly. You spend what you have. I mean, every year, we never have enough money to do all the things we want to do.
Councilmember Curtis.
I will just say, I'm not necessarily saying we've made bad decisions and I really like the addition of the priority-based budgeting to give some structure to our, our whole budget process.
I appreciate that you see some value in that. We talked as a staff this year about trying to We talked as a staff this year about trying to make this less of just an academic exercise and more of a useful tool. And so that's why we are bringing more of that conversation into the budget discussions and into the budget itself. And our plan is to continue talking about it as we go into the new year, even though we may have set a budget, it's not too late to inform us that we might have made other decisions or will want to make other decisions down the road as we look at what we do and how effective it is to get to the results that you want. More, there will be more of that and I have something fun that I want to show you when we get to that point, in a few slides.
I think the structural fix is at the state level on how cities receive revenues. When your largest source of revenue can only grow by 1%, that's not a recipe for success. I think the state law needs to be changed so that property tax can grow with CPI. We could, we could cut five programs and drop our expenditures down, but we'll still catch up again. Or we could add a million dollars in taxes and give us, buy us more time, but we'll still catch up again because our largest source of revenue is only limited to 1% growth.
I think there's been a philosophical change, too, over the years, in that we used to save and it used to take us longer to do things, but we saved until we had the funds to do it. And I think that's changing somewhat now, in that we're doing more and not necessarily having saved for the funds. And so I think there's been a basic change in philosophy.
So we, do we need to talk more about the property tax calculation and how it's presented in the budget? As I said, I believe, last week or the week before, I was a little surprised at the low new construction number. And if that is an indicator of, you know, where that new, that development climate is going, I anticipate 2020 will be lower still. And so that's how I've budgeted it for 2020. We saw a lot of rise in double, double new construction, you know, just a few years ago, so I hope it doesn't fall off too much.
Why are we seeing a decrease in?
In new construction?
Well, no, I'm ahead of you. Go ahead.
Okay.
You'll get to it.
Okay. And sales?
Councilmember Shavnik, did you have something?
Yeah, I kind of want to go back to Brent, excuse me, Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Curtis's comments. Because I'm particularly troubled by the potential getting up to the same point and no longer having significant bank capacity left. So I don't, you know, I don't know, I haven't done this before, but, so I'm not sure where it fits, but I mean, is there a way to show, you know, what would staff prioritize for, if we had to cut things, to get it back to the 1% or not? I mean, I guess I'm not sure how to articulate the question. I mean, basically, if we were to try to not do the 3%, is there a way to show what the impact would be, I guess?
Well, it would be about a $300,000 impact and, yes, for the biennium. Right. We would, we would sit down again and start looking at the programs that we've budgeted and some of the few new things that we've proposed and debate whether those still make sense. I mean, the bank capacity is only one source of your future taxing capacity. Cities who have taken the 1% every year don't have bank capacity and that's okay. And we've lost that compounding that we could have had, had we taken it every year, little by little. The compound effect is pretty great, as you can see just in the two years that we're talking about it. But there's nothing magic about it if it's here gone. There's other taxing avenues you can take and there are expenditure reductions that we can talk about. And, you know, it's a great topic for a retreat, to look at programs and determine which ones are giving you the best results for the community.
Councilmember Smith.
So I just, because I think I know what you're asking and it's very similar to what I was thinking a lot about over the last week, and that is, how reasonable, and we've never, I've never done this since, I don't think, since I've been on the council, but how reasonable is it to say, and this is one person speaking, obviously, but to say, bring us a budget with not a 3% tax increase compounded for the next two years? And maybe it is 1% or, I mean, that's, that's a different, but the, I guess the point is still the same, which is kind of what you're touching on, which is, we can pick and choose the little things, because when you go through this, it's, you can kind of see things that, that you don't know enough about and it's tough to pick and choose on the nitpicky things. It's the bigger things that we as a council, I think, can control a little easier, but maybe there is a way to, to actually direct that and say, we want, assuming that's the will, that's, I mean, we're not there yet. And I know, I'm not trying to get ahead of the thing, I'm just, your question, I think, is a good one because it's something I've been thinking a lot about. How do you, how do you get there in the most efficient way?
Well, if I understood your question and have, having listened to the discussion a bit, if you wanted to, you know, go right to those, on a programing basis, where are we spending money that does not score as highly against those results, we have that information. And there's a bar graph in this presentation that shows you the different quartiles, if you will, of where we're spending our money and the highest, from highest to lowest. And, you know, you could potentially go right to that lowest quartile and say, okay, these are the things that we are doing that don't have the most impact on our goals and dig through those. That's, that's how I would do it. It's likely to be a number of small things, might not be any one big thing, but until you go through that exercise, I couldn't say.
Councilwoman Curtis?
If we did something like that, I could see us adding people or GIS things or other things that we need and subtracting in other areas. So just because, so like, we aren't in a catastrophe now. And I'm thinking more proactively, how can we prevent ourselves from getting there? And so you can both be adding and subtracting at the same time, as long as your net doesn't keep going up too fast.
Absolutely. That's the, that's the whole point of it, you know? I want to do this, how can I free up resources somewhere else to do something that has, you get a bigger bang for your buck? Absolutely.
I guess I'm inclined to proceed with your discussion and, because I don't think we're going to solve this one tonight. Because we, you can see, we're all sort of thinking about it, but, you know, to go ahead and do your presentation and then we'll think about it somewhere in this process.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor. From a structural standpoint, as we do the budget, at some point, we will have our ordinance in front of us related to the property tax.
Yes, you will.
When we adopt the final budget.
Yes.
So hopefully between now and then, in late November, we'll kind of assess all this out.
Exactly.
Or we can make a decision, pass that ordinance, which would complicate your life further and probably pushes out in December for budget, but...
No, I mean, that's the point of all the presentations and discussion is to see what the budget holds and make a determination by the time you talk about the levy in November, when we'll have a public hearing and, you know, make your assessment at that time. So October, basically, are the departmental presentations of our programs and our activities. And then in November, we get into serious conversation about the levy and the public hearings on the budget as well. So I'll move forward into the sales tax assumption and it's, these are, I think you will see that my revenue estimates are very conservative because I don't, in most cases, see a trend, radical trend upward. Most taxes are either staying the same or creeping up just a little bit. There's some that are trending downwards. Sales tax is not predicted to do as well as we did in the last biennium. One is less new construction and the other factor is that there's just not, there's no new, new source of retail coming in.
The recent Supreme Court decision allowing taxes on internet sales, are we going to see any benefit from that?
I don't know. I don't know.
Because I know Amazon's sure collecting them.
Well, we do get some sales tax revenue off Amazon sites. And it's right up there. So it could, it could be, I just haven't seen it yet.
Okay. I'm a good contributor to that one.
There is, there is one, one, you know, because they have some spinoff sites for specialty type products that is really pretty reliably high. So that would be huge. Could be. But I haven't seen it yet, so we will watch for it. Every month. And then utility tax, as I've mentioned in the past year, has been kind of a disappointment. I definitely feel like I over budgeted it two years ago, so I brought those budgets down, especially for telephone and cell phones. Electric and gas, looking at what those revenues have been over the last 12 months is not very encouraging, so they just, there's a bit of an increase budgeted. But I think that gas and electric are dependent upon weather and rates, but it's not a, you know, robustly growing revenue source.
That's a really great slide because that shows you our three largest sources of revenue. And barring banked capacity, our largest gets to grow at 1%. Sales tax is going down by, what do you have, it was 5%, wasn't it?
Roughly, 3 to 5.
Yeah, so we have sales tax going down by 5%. That's our second largest source of revenue. And utility tax is flat or going down.
So...
Beautiful picture.
Why is telephone and cell, cellphone tax going down?
They're using the internet more?
Yeah.
They're getting rid of their landlines?
Landlines are dropping out of households.
Right.
Young people communicate.
Are we not getting revenue off of, off of the fiber, the copper wire connections to, to the internet?
No, we can't tax that.
Nope.
Can we tax the phone use on that? No.
Nope. Not if it's through the internet. There's Wi-Fi calling now through the internet.
Oh, yeah.
And my experience is, most young people, their texting or their Facebook message, instant messaging or private messaging, and very seldom do my children make a call with But I did find some good leads on tax auditors, and I mentioned this last week or the week before, that I really think we could benefit from a utility tax auditor. So I put out some feelers and I found a couple of sources that I think would be well worth checking into at no additional cost because they take a, they take a cut of whatever new revenue that they find for you, but there's no fee over and above that.
So back on this, on the internet sales tax. If it goes by zip code, I mean, we're the only one with this zip code, how do they determine who gets that revenue that the state is bringing in now from the taxing of internet sales? How do we know we're getting our share of what's out there? Or are we just hoping?
I'll try and find out for you. I honestly, I don't know. I don't know. I can do some research on AWC and MRSC's site. I don't have an answer right now, how we know.
I mean, I think in some ways, we're pretty lucky because we have the same zip code.
Right. You don't share it with another entity.
For the entire city and nobody else shares it, unlike Lake Forest Park that has two or three zip codes. So...
All right. I will definitely try and get more information about that next week.
Councilmember Curtis?
So I'm looking on page 30 and it's talking about other potential tax sources. So one says, Kenmore's utility tax rate for natural gas and electricity, 4% is less than the 6% limit allowed by state law. Now, is this different than a franchise fee or the charge for the use of our, our land for them to put all their lines on? Or is this, is both, basically that's the same thing?
It's very similar. It's not quite the same thing, but it's kind of the same thing.
Similar but different.
So we charge the franchiser, the company, and then they generally pass the cost on? So it acts like a tax?
I've seen, I've seen both a franchise fee and a utility tax charged on a utility before, but usually you have either or, you either have a utility tax or a franchise fee, not both, but I've seen both.
I have too. On cable, I've seen it both.
I don't know if this is the time or place to discuss that, but personally, I mean, these companies are for-profit companies, using our property to put in their electrical lines and gas lines. And I would personally have no problem going up to a 6%. And no, it's not. It's in the low, lower revenue column there, but still, I don't know, there may be another place to have that discussion, but...
Yeah. So the downside of that is they just pass it directly on to the consumer. They even have it as a line item on your bill. So it's not something that they absorb and take less corporate profits, they just pass it directly on to the consumer and in some, and, and the utility tax is a more regressive tax than, say, property tax. So it hits the pocketbooks of low-income people harder than a, than a property tax So there's, there's ways to alleviate that, like offering a utility tax rebate, but then there's administrative costs that go with that. But, yeah, but that can be, my, my thought for this budget was, okay, I'm keeping service levels the same and I'm bringing you a balanced budget, let's have a community conversation over the next year or so, really talks about revenue sources, expenditure options, and really have a holistic, thoughtful conversation about this over the next year or so. And so, and my thought is that over, over this conversation that we have, things like utility tax could be on the table.
Because I do remember at one point, we had the discussion of, at least my poor understanding of regressive taxes versus other types of taxes and like have them all lined up in a big row, say from one extreme to the other, so we can make some more intelligent choices. Some are sort of intuitive, but I'm not sure they're, they all are. I, for now, you've produced a budget that's balanced and you, with the, in mind, we've got a big long-term problem to solve, let's do that with the public.
Another important revenue source, similar but different, are franchise fees. And at this time, we charge a 5% franchise fee on Two Frontier and Comcast Cable. And that's a, that, that revenue source predictably increases every year. I think they raise their rates predictably every year and it's one of those services that people keep and buy more of or add on to, as opposed to utilities sometimes. So I've projected an increase here for Comcast and Frontier Cable. And we have a franchise fee also on Water and Sewer, forgot to mention that. And that's been rising at a nice 4% to 5% increase. This is a revenue source that we, in turn, then, transfer to the street fund and it helps to offset the cost of street and road maintenance and operations. fund, and it helps to offset the cost of street and road maintenance and operations.
When you say, in, like a 5% increase, that's the cumulative increase for the whole biennium?
Over, over, over two years.
Yeah.
Correct. Correct. And development revenues are a very significant source, both the permitting and the plan review and the land use inspections. And thankfully, development services helps me with these projections and budgets. And there's, you know, not as much in the pipeline as far as they can see at this point. So, we're anticipating that these will drop off a bit too in the new, in the new biennium.
And so, when Brian gets up there, her, her development director, we could address issues like the pre-application fees or other questions, balancing those out?
Keep that, sure. Next, we would have distributions from the state for, for liquor taxes. We get a liquor excise tax distribution and a liquor board profit distribution. And past history aside, you know, these have gone up and down as the legislature has taken them away and given them back. So, liquor excise taxes do, are, are growing. They, over the two years, I'm projecting a 10% increase. And I use the municipal research projections for these revenues, because they're very difficult to anticipate. So, they provide us with a per capita rate, and that's solely the, the support for these revenues. And liquor board profits are, are static. They, they are not going to increase anymore unless the legislature changes something about that distribution. And then I mentioned, we, we are trying to be very aggressive and very conscientious about charging overhead to capital projects. So, with, with three engineers on, on board, we're trying to recover costs of about 90% of their time, either on the bridge or the walkways and waterways or other grant-funded projects. And almost as much with the, the planning staff, the park project managers, and a portion of the, the director. So, that's an increase over the, the prior biennium. And another revenue source in here that's a, kind of an outlier, is the Lake Point reimbursement. And again, I, I mentioned that we have an agreement where we can recover perhaps up to $250,000 a year in costs. So, we've put the revenue on the revenue side of the books and the expense, on the expense side of the books, and whatever those costs are that we can get reimbursed for, they will, they will wash. But it is part of the revenue picture. Gambling revenues were going up for a while, and so we budgeted those a little bit more aggressively in the last biennium, and now they've dropped off. I don't know why. So, it's a 22% decrease in this budget from the prior budget.
Historically, we were not looking at those, and we weren't counting on them. When, when did that change?
Well, I've always included and counted on these, these pull tabs and, yeah, because there have been a few more establishments that, that sell them pretty, pretty aggressively. And, you know, for $143,000 a year, I think it's important to, to mention.
Yeah, but 22% decrease is pretty substantial.
I don't know if one of those establishment closed. I don't, I don't, I don't know why. And it, and you know what we noticed was during the recession, that they went up. And now they've gone back down.
Yeah, I think historically, we've seen other cities get in trouble trying to, or incorporating it as an important part of the budget. And so, I thought that we tried to do that way back when.
I'm sorry for interrupting. But I wouldn't say it's an important part of the budget, but anything, you know, over $100,000, I like to look at. Also, in this budget, some, some new things, or a little bit different things. Our reimbursement from the North Shore School District is up a bit, because now this, we're receiving reimbursement not only for the school resource officer, but for Moreland's maintenance agreement. So, that's something new. The criminal justice distributions from the state are fairly static. They don't change very much. And then, new to this budget is expenditures and revenues related to the incubator. So, we have incorporated the incubator operations into the budget, so we have the incubator leases in the revenue picture. And you'll see, also Kenmore Village is, has been incorporated into the general fund budget. And the only revenue associated with that are distributions from our property manager. So, they collect the rents from our tenants, the post office, Diva Espresso, pay a lot of the bills, and then every year we ask for our cash distribution. So, you'll, you'll be seeing this in the revenue discussion.
Does, does that include then also the Diva Espresso, the, and are we getting, we, I believe the lease was structured, we get a percentage once we hit a certain amount? Is, can you shed light on what we earn a month or a year so far now that we've got a year under our belt?
Oh, I, I don't remember those numbers, but I can bring them. I do know for the last five, I think, six months, Diva has hit their sales target and has paid that additional percentage based on their, exceeding their, their sales target. So, they have continued to grow, and that revenue source has continued to climb over, over the last year. So, I would say the last six months, they've hit that sales target and done better than that.
Correct.
And that, and that rolls into the property manager's books and then becomes part of our distribution on a annual basis.
I think, so base rent with triple nets is about 28 a foot, and it's about 1,100 square feet. So, should be getting about 28, $30,000 a year from them.
Actually, I was specifically referring to once they hit their, their revenue targets.
Yeah.
And if we knew what that amount was.
We can, we can sure get that for you.
I'd just be curious. It's, I'm sure it's not a hundred thousand.
Kelly's writing that down. This, this quick and dirty graph is just to show you how the proposed, the adopted budget, the projected budget and the new budget line up as far as the major revenue sources. You can see that the bigger increases are in property taxes and then overhead reimbursements, of course. And this is the graph that I mentioned earlier about the PBB results that we received recently. And remember, we're looking back at the 17, 18 budget, and how did we budget, and how did those, what did those programs cost and as far as staff and non-personnel, and how did they score as far as meeting the results of the city? So, quartile one program are those programs that are essential or critical or best achieve the results that you have identified. Quartile four would be programs that have minimal or no effect in achieving results. So, if I were just, as a first step, looking at places to really analyze and have a conversation about, should we keep doing this or not? Or are there opportunities for freeing up some of those revenues or expenditures so we can do something else? That's where I would look. And when I refer to results, those are the, the oval maps on, that start on page 33 of the budget. So, you can see in quartile four, we have $2.4 million in that quartile. So, there could be some opportunities there, is all I'm going to say.
I, I, not to be too negative, I'm feeling kind of negative tonight, but, but I've looked at quartile four, the ones that score low. And guess what? A lot of them are things like unfunded mandates. We have to pay for them anyway, so we can't cut them. So, it's...
So...
Yeah, I mean, it's not...
So, shouldn't, just as a thought, shouldn't that be in quartile one then? I mean, because we're going to be always looking to quartiles three and four, I would think, when we're looking for savings. And either that or not even have them in the quartile.
Yeah, so, we look at a whole host of criteria, and just one of the criteria is mandated by the state. But there's all other, other things. Does it add to our quality of life? Does it contribute to safety? You know, so mandated is one of several criteria. But, but you're right, if it's mandated and we have to pay for it, maybe it should get a...
That might be the only reason that it scores high, that there might not be any demand for it. There, it might not serve more than, you know, even 10% of the population. There might be other jurisdictions that can do it, or cost recovery is another one. So, mandate is just a piece of the puzzle, and we can talk more about that too. We can filter these programs by what are we mandated to do that we don't do for any other reason.
So, maybe that's a, an approach to look at. Maybe it would be as part of a, you know, going forward, looking at how we approach the budget, maybe one of it is specifically, what are the mandates and what are those funding things? And then they can be removed from the, the priority-based budgeting quartile ranking.
Yeah. Yeah, I was, I was flipping through this book, and I swear in past budgets, there's been lists with, with the PBB results showing where things landed quartile-wise. Maybe I'm mistaken. I know there's a way for us to access that, or at least I think there's a way for us to access that on our laptops. Could we maybe just, you know, sometime after this meeting, just get an email with kind of, here's how we can go digging through the PBB results a little bit?
Sure.
Just, because it might be a good exercise. Or if, if not that, just a list of the stuff in the fourth quartile.
I can, I, I can give you a list. I can also show you the next slide.
Okay.
Which, well, it's not the slide. I have to go, how do I minimize this, Kelly? Just escape. So, that was a picture of a site where we have a really nice new interface for looking at the results that I just brought to your attention. So, this is Kenmore's site. These are, these tabs are our results. And as you click on each result, it will show you what were the, what we call the maps to getting to that result. So, you can click across desirable life, work, and these are all the different criteria that help us meet that. If you value diversity, these are those maps to achieving diversity and transportation. So, this is a really nice, interactive, visually pleasing tool. And then when you click on one, you can go below and see all the programs become these nice boxes. And the bigger the box, the bigger the cost. The darker the box, the more relevant it is to that result.
I click on the first one, and I get not found here.
Well, you, you, you can't be logged on, so that's probably why.
Well, you've got a link there, but it's non-functional.
Well, no, I, I actually made it work. I had to capitalize the K in Kenmore, but then it came to a login page, so...
Yeah, there's a login page. And if you would like a login to that page, we can set one up to you, and you can have the URL, and you can go to this page, and you can play around with it all you like. So, that's the key to this. The darkest, the darkest squares are the most relevant. The biggest squares are the most costly. So, you can click on one and see a description of it, how it scored, what the cost is, what the FTEs are. You can drill down further, and you can see, okay, here's the total cost. How much of it's personnel? How much of it's non-personnel? Which positions are included in those personnel costs? And what are the operating costs that were assigned to it? So, there's a ton of data in there that if you want to click around, you're very welcome to do that, and I can set that up for you.
So, my preference would be not to mess with the whole tool, but to keep doing what we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
And just create a special report saying unfunded mandates. And let us look at that.
Yes, we can, we can do that too, sure.
Instead of taking them out of the budget. I, I think that will create an artifact that will throw everything else off. So, it's, it's, there's so much data here, you can rearrange it any way you want. So, I'd say, pull that data aside, just get us a report rather than creating next year a, a whole new methodology for doing this.
Oh, okay. No, that's, that's totally, there's a way to do that as well. But this is the result of all that data that is available for your viewing pleasure, I guess, for as much time as you want to spend on it and look at it and generate questions from it. And this is something that, you know, may help the staff too as we move forward through the year. But there, there are some other resources too where we can say, we can just filter right onto the mandate or filter right onto the cost recovery and, or the demand. But I was pretty excited to show you this site, because we all thought it was more intuitive than just the bars that we used to look at the last few years. Maybe not. But, so this, this was just a screenshot that I put in your PowerPoint presentation.
Well, maybe a screenshot, but you click on those tabs and it tries.
It does try. Well, I, I tried to link it, but I was not very successful in doing that. Okay. And then this next one was just kind of a definition of how that, that table worked. Okay, so, we are going to move into the departmental budgets. If there are no questions at this point, we're going to ask the Nancy Asley and her team to join us and talk about the council budget and the city manager's budget.
Great. Good evening. I will be brief. The city council budget is one of the smaller general fund department budgets. And as you can see, there is an increase proposed for this next biennium over the last biennium. And I can tell you exactly what represents that increase. Just a few weeks ago, the, the council discussed a consultant contract that, that was in, in place for staffing the mayor's very important participation on the Sound Transit Executive Board. And so, that, that increase is pretty much equal to the, the size of the contract if we're to go forward over the next two years. And we have highlighted it on, on this next slide for, for that consultant contract. And then just listed some of the many organizations and, and regional and, and national organizations that, that the council is involved in, and that has been an important function of the council. And it really does pay off in, in many, many ways for the city. Go to the, we were just talking about priority-based budgeting.
Can I, can I have a quick comment on that last slide?
Sure.
It's not a big deal, but you missed Seashore, which is something that...
Sorry.
The merit I've spent time on.
That's, that's a good catch. Thank you. These are the five highest scoring programs out of the, out of the council's budget. And I, I think it is, you know, pretty indicative of, you know, the federal and state government relations, the goal-setting and, and what we're doing right now. The, the council meetings are all highly scored for the, for the council budget. So, with that, happy to answer any questions.
Councilwoman Smith?
Does the, Nancy, does the, all the travel and lodging and all that, does that fall under like the, well, actually, what does that fall under on this, on the expenses on here? Or maybe Joanne is, you're the one that...
Are you looking in the budget?
Yes.
In the budget book?
On the table of all programs?
On page 92, there's a summary of, the expenditure summary, salaries and wages, personnel benefits, supplies and services. It would be under the services line item.
Okay. So, so is that all? Is that information, so the next page on 93?
Mm-hmm. So, those are the, those are the PBB programs.
Yeah.
And so, things like travel, registration, those kind of things are spread depending upon what activity they support as much as we possibly can. So, when we... So when we go through our exercise of allocating the line item costs, which are summarized on 92, to the programs, we say, okay, this line item is used to support these programs. And we have various ways of allocating that cost to them.
So NLC meetings then would go under appointments to, or have to do with federal, state government relations? Or?
Most likely.
Or regional or national boards and commissions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks.
And remember, the programs on page 93 are reflective of the 1718 budget.
Right.
So don't try to make them match the 1920 budget. But in most cases, you know, what we do from year to year as a whole.
Right.
Is pretty stable, predictable. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Yes, thank you.
Okay. I could go on about PBB and how we do it if you had the time, but we don't. So I don't think that's really what would be as.
(Inaudible) it was, there were different line items for like travel. And there were things that you could look and actually see. But in here, there's no way to have just all the other services.
Okay. Well, that PBB program won't tell you that specifically because it's more of a program budget, not a line item budget. And we got away from doing line item budgets several budgets ago. But if you have a question about a specific type of expense, we can still give you that information.
It's just from a structural standpoint, it, to me, personally, I don't have a problem with what the expenses were. I just remember seeing them in the past and it's, if you are trying to cut costs, that's one area you can look at. You can actually then, you could look at and go, okay, this is what we're spending every year on going to DC or going to this or that or whatever. And so it's just, it allows you to have a mechanism in place to look at how maybe that's something that can be looked at.
Sure.
And so that's what, with this, the way it's set up, there's really no way to know, is there room for improvement here? And that's, I guess, what I was trying to get at.
No, I totally understand. And that information's always available if you desire it and request it, sure.
It's just funny how, it's like, all these pages and you still don't have really what you oftentimes are looking for. It's nobody's fault. It's just you can't be expected to pull everything together on every single issue.
Yeah, and I think you can find a lot of the travel stuff in the checks, in the consent agendas, but you have to parcel out. So I agree with you that it'd be helpful to have it all summarized, you know, or at least available in the budget.
And that, I know it's a fair amount, is because I see those and it's like, okay, well, that's a lot, you know, they could.
I'll add one more thing that is included in the city council's budget, and that is dues for some of the national and regional organizations, like Puget Sound Regional Council, ETP, National League of Cities, you know, so those are generally in the council's budget. There are a few of those that are also in city manager's budget, for example.
Deputy Mayor.
You just set me up, Nancy. You just set me right up. So I was actually, I had mentioned all this to you guys before also, but I want to add one more membership to this list, if possible. And that's the King County Cities Climate Collaboration. And I assume you all saw the news last week with the UN report about climate change. Showed that to prevent 2.7 degrees of warming, greenhouse pollution needs to be reduced by 45% from 2010 levels by 2030 and 100% by 2050. This has been an all-hands-on-deck situation for a while now, but this really kind of brought it to the fore for a lot of folks. We have as little as 12 years to actually make a dent. Otherwise, we may see some catastrophic results. I'm not arguing that Little Kenmore is going to make a difference all by ourselves, but joining up with a majority of the cities in King County, I think, and gaining access to the resources that they have, that the collaboration has, would help us with things like green building codes, figuring out ways to incentivize solar, things like that. I think that's, and this is what Ms. Grayland brought up earlier, I think this is probably the absolute minimum we can do when it comes to dealing with climate change, which is something that we haven't really ever tackled as a council. So I would like to move to add membership dues to 4K4C to the council budget for 2019 and '20 and direct staff to come back to the council to approve the interlocal agreement to formally join the coalition. It's about 1,200 a year. They may bump it after this year, I'm not sure, but it's 1,200 right now. Second.
All right, it moved in second. I guess the question that I have and have had, this tends to be a staff organization. Elections, electeds have an hour or two-hour meeting twice a year, but staff is expected to meet every month. What kind of burden will this put on city staff?
My recommendation, addition, is we look at the agenda ahead of time, see if it's worthwhile going and based on other priorities and things that we have going on at the time, make the call. And if we have time and if there's, if the agenda is productive, then we go.
And I would think that if we joined the organization, we would be going all the time. But I see your point.
I don't think there's any expectation that staff be at every meeting. I mean.
Right, but I mean, if we're going to get something out of it, we should be going to it.
It's also a resource that you can reach out to when you're trying to tackle a specific issue, so.
Councilwoman Shervin.
My understanding is the resources there regardless, so, yeah, so I'm not, I've never been clear about the value out of this particular organization. I'm certainly in favor of the impetus and the concepts, and I think we could probably do more to reduce our carbon footprint than we are, but I don't know that this is the mechanism. We could probably do more by just traveling less. But anyway, I think there's a lot of other ways to, rather than increasing our costs in this way.
Any further discussion? Councilwoman Smith?
I actually, was this the one we got the report on like a month ago?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the one that came and presented.
And I can't recall what, didn't we discuss it after or did we? Did we just?
It was discussed that we'd bring it up during budget.
Okay.
I'm just following through.
Yeah.
No, no, you're doing a fine job.
I forgot.
Sorry.
I can't remember enough about it, believe it or not. I know that sounds ridiculous, but I guess my point is I.
All right, so we have a motion to have staff come back within budget funds or membership in C4C. Absolutely.
So what does our city manager really think about this? Or does he know?[1145.83][1145.83](Laughter). I actually would really like his opinion on the value of the organization and just candid thoughts.
And Nancy, you're welcome to join in, too. To me, it's, I think it's making the statement that we're part of this group and adding our voice. So you can't put a dollar figure on that, but I think there is value to being on a list of other cities and saying, oh, Kenmore's there and just making that voice even stronger by adding ours to it. So it's more of a symbolic thing. I'm sure we'll get value from being part of the conversation and what we learn from the meetings and stuff, but it's more of a symbolic statement in my mind.
You said it needs a council member to go every couple times a year. Do we have somebody, a representative?
Deputy Mayor.
I'd be happy to go. I mean, I was at their elected officials' meeting just a couple weeks ago because they were inviting whoever wanted to stop by, so.
I'll just also add that, you know, there are a lot of intergovernmental initiatives and groups in King County. And I think we're a smaller organization. We don't have the number of staff people, technical people that the county or Bellevue or certainly Seattle has. But, you know, like Rob said, you pick and choose what meetings are the most relevant and get from it what you can. And weigh that against, you know, the other responsibilities that staff have. So I think there's a way to benefit from it.
And if I remember correctly, dues are minimal. It's like 1,500 bucks a year, so.
It's 1,200, at least right now. They might bump up a little bit.
It was a very minor amount.
The price of a fancy gym membership.
That's right. Unless you're old and you get one for free.
CrossFit membership.
Yes, you can, trust me. All right. So motion on table and it's to join C4C.
K4C.
Is it K4C? I thought it was C4C.
K4C.
K4C. You're sitting there.
It's really exciting. I like this view.
So you can take the role then.
Okay. You ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Councilmember Shervin.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hervig?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Marshall?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Passed.
All right. We can add our voice to the list.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Any other questions from you on the city councils?
Yes, there is. I'm just curious. In our budget, we have city manager oversight. Is that him overseeing us or us overseeing him?[1358.48][1358.48](Laughter). Not very clear.
Also known as city manager cracking the whip on you.[1366.12][1366.12](Pff) Or vice versa. Not sure which.
Okay.
All right.
Do we have council oversight in the city manager's budget?
Well, you're about to find out.
As a program?
Okay.
Can I intro?
Yes. All right, so this is the city manager's office budget. And let me just get there. So that includes me, being the CEO of the city, but also it includes a lot of programs, includes economic development and communications and events and volunteer services and public records and receptionist and several other things. So we actually have quite a bit of activity going on in the city manager's office and some very busy people who love what they do. But I think, I think the main thing with the city manager's budget is, with the city manager's office, is that we handle a lot of the, not just the leadership for the organization, but a lot of the outreach and coordination with the community, so.
This is one department budget that is smaller going into the next biennium than it was for the 1718 biennium. And I'll explain, you know, some of the reasons for that in a second. I'd like to call your attention to the fact that receptionist is plural in this because you might recall that the front desk reception position is filled by two part-time people that overlap at the early afternoon hour. And so far, that is working out just fabulously for us. And as you know, there was a part-time programming coordinator with us this past year, helping with Town Square and Hangar Programming, other events. We are pleased tonight to have two people from our staff who haven't been through a biennial budget before, Becky Range, who is the communications specialist, and Shelby Crowe, who is events and volunteer supervisor. But we'll go on to the next slide and give you a few highlights about the budget. You'll hear soon from the city clerk's office that human service programs were previously in the city manager's budget and for this next biennium and actually presently, they have been taken on by the city clerk's office. So that is a, and you'll hear about the funds that are being recommended for human service agencies. And so that is now in the city clerk's budget. So that was, that moved out of city manager's office, but the business incubator program is proposed to be part of general fund and in the city manager's office for this next biennium. And it was, it has been since its inception in 2013 in the Strategic Opportunities Fund. Couple of other highlights. The general fund contribution to the Arch, which stands for Regional Coalition for Housing. Trust Fund remains the same in the general fund, but when we get to the Strategic Opportunities Fund discussion later on, you'll see that there's been, that is proposed to be increased with monies from the Strategic Opportunities Fund. But in the general fund, city manager's office, it remains the same as it has been at $30,000 per year. Another highlight to the proposed budget, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, is an upgrade to our website, which is overdue. And Rob, you kind of already spoke to the kind of the central role that this office plays. But, and with the big redevelopment projects, Rob and I like to call that the trifecta of Kenmore redevelopment, the downtown, Lake Point, and the seminary rehabilitation.
Yeah, I think a big workload item for Nancy and to lesser degree, me, is going to be Sound Transit III. So Nancy is our point person on Bus Rapid Transit and she interacts frequently with Sound Transit on that issue and she coordinates with me and John Vicente and hopefully our two council members that are on the legislative committee. But, yeah, that's going to continue to be a big part of our workload for the next couple of years.
Okay. So we'll go to the next slide. So economic development is one thing that we were talking with you about in recent months because we updated our economic development strategy this year. And I'll just really quickly roll through what.
But yeah, that's going to continue to be a big part of our workload for the next couple of years.
Okay. So we'll go to the next slide. So economic development is one thing that we were talking with you about in recent months because we updated our economic development strategy this year. And I'll just really quickly roll through what the goals in that strategy are, because I think you're going to be seeing, not only in our work program, but in other departments' work programs, things that will line up with these strategies, not only for this budget, but for a couple of biennial budgets in the future. So the first one is to promote Kenmore's image. The second goal is grow new in existing businesses and target sectors. Number three, enable high-quality retail office and mixed-use development. Four is leverage placemaking and livability for economic development. And we've certainly seen that with the Town Square and Hangar this year. Goal five is expand access to the waterfront and connect to multimodal transportation. And number six is highlight Kenmore's welcoming business climate. So with that, you see the kinds of things that are in the work plan and budget for this next biennium. And as I mentioned, the Kenmore Business Incubator moves into the general fund in this proposed budget. That budget, ever since it was, the program was created in 2013, the overall budget has decreased each biennium, and the revenue from clients has increased each biennium. This year, we have, we are proposing a slight addition so that we can better serve the clients that we have. And that is to add a few more hours each month to the business consul, our business development consultant time, so that our growing list of companies who are clients in this program can meet with him and participate in other group kinds of activities. So that will be one change for the business incubator budget. It'll get a little bit bigger over this biennium in order for us to serve our clients more frequently and more completely. With the incubator, I will say that we have generally been at about twenty to twenty-five businesses that we are serving at any one time. And you'll probably recall, too, that something that the incubator has been involved in, but is not part of this budget, is activities that we've done with Port of Seattle grant funds over the last couple of years. And that enabled us to actually serve an additional about thirty to thirty-five businesses in business training classes. And we also got revenue from those businesses who took part in that. So it's been a very busy biennium in economic development, and we look forward to having another busy biennium coming forward. And I always like to say that everyone in our organization plays a role in economic development. So those strategies that I rolled through quickly, I know you're going to see in different people's work programs. And by the way, that is one thing that we're not spending money on this year, is updating the economic development strategy, since we've completed that in the last biennium. So I'm going to let Becky roll through marketing and communications.
So most of our requests for marketing and communications really haven't changed. I do want to touch a little bit briefly on the website upgrade, because you might have a few questions about that. So one of the things that I want to say, when I think about what our community engagement strategy should be for our community, you're always going to hear me say, what's best for the community? What's the easiest way for the community to get information from us and to understand what we're doing, and also what's most efficient? And so right now, our website is the foundation for all of that information and all of that community engagement. And don't think so much about the look and feel of the current website, but if you think about the back end of that website, we actually picked the back end of that website about six years ago. We call that the content management system. And that content management system is getting a little bit dated. Technology moves very quickly. It's a system called Drupal. You might be familiar with it. But it's actually a little bit difficult for our staff to keep updated. We're not able to be as nimble as we'd like to be. We're not able to keep the website as clean and fresh and relevant as we would like to be able to do. So that's one issue for us. If we devote a little bit more funds to maybe an upgraded backend system, we'll be able to make that product easier for our community to look at. But probably one of the most critical things, and I don't know if you're aware of this, scammers are getting really, really good. So in the last three to six months, our website has actually been hacked multiple times by scammers. They're search engine optimization scams. Nothing too nefarious, but what happens is scammers set up a series of pages with our website information and redirects. And so it creates a problem for us on the internet, and also creates a problem for us as we try to update our web content. Our users sometimes aren't able to do that. And we've got probably four to five staffers that are web admin, and they're not able to go in and update things when we're having those security issues. So we wanted to devote a little bit of money to rectifying that over the next couple of years. Any questions on that?
Deputy Mayor?
So, I mean, I haven't been on the council long, I think, I'm in my fifth year now. And I remember when we set up the last site, so it's not that long ago. What are we looking at for costs on this?
Well, that's a great question. We've been studying it for the last several weeks, because there's a couple of different things we could have done. We can stay with the current content management system, but what we would need to do is actually start paying a web maintenance and a service provider contract. With the system that we're using right now, I got in one estimate from one company, and even if it's a little bit high, just that annual cost is about thirty-six thousand dollars. But we could actually move to a more city-industry-specific backend system and migrate all that content over for around forty to forty-five thousand. And one of the things that we've really been studying to make sure we're being efficient is if we move to that type of backend system, we can also eliminate some other costs that we're paying right now that don't really work with our current website. For example, our email delivery system is separate from our website. So we pay twelve thousand dollars a year just to be able to have that email subscription service, and it doesn't even really integrate with our current website. So we, you know, Joanne asked us to really study all the numbers and to try to see what is the most efficient and cost-effective, and maybe not just over these next two years, but the future years. So when you start to think about the cost savings, and the new systems are so much more efficient, you save a lot of staff time not having to update things. So that's pretty important to think about.
So forty to forty-five thousand dollar one-time cost, and then you'll see a twelve thousand a year savings in that email distribution.
Eliminate the twelve thousand a year. And then also, if we get to a, because the new systems are so efficient and so much better, you can then start to incorporate things at a lower cost. You know, right now, we're kind of limited. We have a separate webpage for Hangar reservations. You know, we can't easily do payment processing online, or if we do, we have to pay extra for that. So if we move to this, some of the newer systems, it's all included. For example, the email delivery system is completely included in that cost, so.
What are we paying currently? I'm just trying to get a sense. We're saving twelve thousand dollars, but what are we paying for our website right now?
Well, we actually don't currently have a maintenance and a service provider contract for the website. So, you know, I think we just didn't need it kind of in the beginning. But we do pay for things like a site improve contract, which is something that kind of crawls our site to see where we have missing links and those types of things. That's seven to eight thousand dollars a year, I believe. And then one of the things that we are also really interested in is online community engagement. That's kind of where everyone wants to engage, right, with you and with us.
But that's all happening on like Nextdoor or Facebook.
Well, it is, in some ways, and in some very unofficial ways. But what we do now is, we often will have a survey for a project, and then another survey for a different issue or a project. With the new backend system, we can have one integrated engagement portal, and you can have all of your information in one place. And that's what all of our.
I'm sorry, I couldn't.
That's okay.
That's the last sentence, I apologize.
That's what all of our other cities are doing.
But you do know how to get to that place, right?
I'll go down sixty-eight. So I'm sorry, what was the last little bit there?
Well, so a lot of other cities are using more of one online engagement tool, and it's just, it's very powerful if you use that technology.
And I'm just curious, because I have some minor, but what sort of? What provider or what backend are you looking at?
There's about three to four main website vendors that handle cities. That's their specialty.
Okay.
And I think we would, we've already started to kind of evaluate all of those. And that's, they're really good at it. It's what they do.
Like Granicus and that sort of thing, or?
Yeah, so Granicus is a great example. Granicus, you know, bought Vision, who's an internet provider. And now that they've joined forces, they're making things pretty seamless with your email delivery and things like that. And those are all things that we're studying, because we just really want to be efficient. And I think we could be a little bit more efficient than what we are right now.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. I have a question on the website. If there's one thing that I could ask, and I'm the last person that should be given technological advice at any level, but I do, I think it would be really helpful to have some of the common current, just a little button that stands out. I would actually prefer even less, even though I like the photos on the homepage, they're great, but I think if we could have two or three, like, all the Lake Point info. Just click here, a big old button that says Lake Point, everything answered, and the proposed budget. You know, it would be great to have it where you don't have to go try to navigate to find it. And so just some of the really current things. If we could have two, three, four buttons that just jump out at you, I think that would be a huge public benefit.
We completely agree. And that's one of the limitations with our current website. It's a pretty sophisticated backend system. And the website admins here, we're not coders, we're not real tech people. The new city websites, that's exactly how they're designed, is to allow us to highlight information, highlight issues, link to different things, and to really make it easy for the community. And one of the things that we really, really like about the new website is they've also made it so that if you were in an emergency situation, there's a click of a button where your whole website switches to emergency communications mode. So there's just, they're really designed specifically for cities, and you would see a real improvement if we did that.
And you know what, it actually saves, it would probably save a lot of headaches on the cars requests and stuff. When people know where information is, they get it, and it's easy to spread factual information rather than lies.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Becky. And we'll hear from Shelby Crowe, another wonderful member of our team on events and volunteers.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, I'm sorry. So in twenty eighteen, or sorry, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we will continue to focus on events that have been popular in the community, which includes the summer concerts, the Fourth of July fireworks show, the Why I Love Kenmore Summer Party, the tree lighting, and I'm sorry that it was not included on this list, but the outdoor movies as well. We will consolidate Play Day into the Why I Love Kenmore event, and move the Why I Love Kenmore event to June to be more mindful of staff capacity. And I'd like to thank those council members who had input on that decision. The Town Square and Hangar continues to be wildly popular in our community, and there's high demand for the spaces in the Hangar. We are coming up on our one-year anniversary of taking reservations, and are just shy of a thousand reservation requests. And so the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget will allow us to maintain the current reservation system and website. And as Becky mentioned, if we move forward with a different website system, we may be able to integrate the cost of the reservation software into that. That may be something that's included. We're seeing a steady increase in volunteerism, especially with one-time and event volunteers, and need to replace some essential supplies and tools. We'll also be slightly adjusting our recognition techniques in the coming year as we sort of see this new, indifferent, modern volunteer sort of come out of the woodwork. And it's something that a lot of other city volunteer coordinators are talking about. We'll also continue to support community events, such as the Hydroplane Cup and other key festivals, especially events that bring money and visitors into the city. So overall, we'll be really just maintaining the course with events and volunteerism.
Councilmember Shavnik.
I think these are probably just examples, right? Because I mean, like, the movies are not there, and I mean, they're, yeah.
Yes, yes, my apologies, they were left off.
Yeah, so a couple of things. You know, I'm all about the fun, right? And I love what you're doing. I think it's fantastic. And I think the rec position is somewhat getting absorbed across departments. I don't know where that gets brought up, whether that's the section or some other section. So what I'm wondering about this in particular is kind of the extent to which, and this is kind of a Joanne question maybe, the extent to which the actual events, not the staff support, but the actual events, are funded by the city versus funded by sponsors? Because I'm just thinking, is there a way to leverage sponsors more than we do?
So we've actually seen quite an increase in sponsorship from local community businesses in the last several years. If you look back, you know, even four or five years ago, we were looking at event sponsorship from community sponsors on a yearly basis, you know, between ten and thirteen thousand. Last year, we brought in about twenty-five thousand. This year, over thirty thousand, and we're expecting similar numbers next year. So we do spend most of the winter and spring looking for community businesses and large sponsors to help offset a lot of those costs. That's how we're able to.
Do we know what percentage they're offset? I mean, I'm just thinking like, you know, the Fourth of July fireworks, some organization could just say, that's going to be ours, you know, sponsored by blah.
Certainly.
You know, I mean, that's what they've done, you know, in Seattle and other places. You know, same with summer concerts, maybe less so with the Why I Love Kenmore Summer Party, although Main Street certainly takes part in that. But, you know, outside of that, I'd like to, you know, really push that envelope as much as we could on that. And the other thing, you know, I've always thought, you know, all of these are great. They're heavily focused on the summer. And, I mean, the only other thing we have is, like you said, the hydro races. And wherever, we have nothing in the fall. We have a lot of breweries. You know, they could easily do a Oktoberfest. I know that's a derivative. But, I mean, you know, something that would, you know, be nice to maybe think, and I know you can do this, is kind of think strategically about the whole year, and how do we, how do we spread the fun a little bit?
That's a really good point. And our team is so busy in the summer.
Right, exactly.
And so I think that Why I Love Kenmore is actually going to move a little earlier in the season. Do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, we'll be moving it. The last two years, we've held it in the end of August. And August is our heaviest month of the year. There are some weeks where we have up to four large-scale events in a week. So we'll be moving the Why I Love Kenmore event into June. I know there have been questions about whether weather would impact it, and we learned this year that there's really no guarantee. It rained for the eight hours prior to Why I Love Kenmore this year, and we sat up in the pouring rain. So, you know, I think we have just as much chance of sunny weather in June as we do in August, unfortunately. But thank you, Councilmember Shavnik. That's a good point, that we could be looking at other times of the year to hold events. And we've looked at what other cities are doing and are trying to, you know, somewhat follow their models, and we have some room, some wiggle room.
And really leverage those sponsorships. I mean, I, you know, maybe even, I don't know if there's more room to do that. But, and does the rec coordinator? And does the rec coordinator, where does that fit in the conversation? I don't want to miss it.
Yeah, I think now is the best time to bring it up.
Oh, at 10:10, really?
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, I know we had some discussion of that, and I know that it's not on the table. I do want to recognize that staff are already doing some of the tasks that are, oh, actually, they haven't seen the job description. That never went out, right? So then it's irrelevant.
If they turn to page 24 of the city manager budget message, that captures the essence of it.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, suffice it to say, staff are already doing some of these things, and I just want to recognize that, and so this is an effort to kind of consolidate. And, you know, at this juncture, I think this is, you know, maybe what needs to happen just because we don't have more budget, but I think the one sticky point that I have, well, there was two. One of them's going to be addressed with Becky, I think, with the website and the media piece, but the other sticky point is, you know, we've just, we've got Rob in this funny position of essentially being the point person, and I...
For KAWAC?
Okay, so for any other vendor coming in, Steve's contract, anything like that that would come along, you're not? It would be somebody else?
Oh, yeah. So I'm not the point of contact for a lot of things, like Skate Like a Girl and Skyhawk, is it Skyhawks? Skyhawks, things like that.
Okay, so that's somebody else.
Yeah, that's Shelby.
Ah, okay.
I've got, I do have KAWAC and I do have the Kayak Concession. I think those are the two I have. But so our model is to kind of decentralize and spread it like peanut butter across all the organization. I think Shelby and I probably have the bulk of them. Shelby more seldom than me, but there's other folks involved, too.
Okay.
But you and I talked about a part-time option where you still...
Yeah, and again, without kind of exploring it, I mean, the full-time option was, you know, clearly a fair amount of money, but, and I guess the, I mean, my biggest concern was, you know, having Rob in this position and also the confusion and particularly leadership around the KAWAC, but I think there may be, you know, there may be other ways that can be worked on. I do want us at some point to consider the part-time piece. Again, I'm, you know, making the case that, you know, you just look at, there are no other cities of our, as I said before, no other cities of our size or anywhere near our size, half our size, that don't have a point person. And I actually think that issue's going to come up as soon as you do the website. I mean, there's, you know, there's going to have to be, for more information, I mean, I don't know how we're going to get around that without naming something, even if it's just an email address. That email address has to go to somebody, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure how we're going to completely get around that. So, just saying.
Okay, next slide. Here are the top scoring programs from priority-based budgeting in the city manager's office. You've heard about just about all of them so far. So with that, is there any other questions? Happy to take them.
Deputy Mayor.
Maybe you covered this, and maybe I missed it, and if so, I apologize. I just noticed that there's a big increase in the services between the 17, 18 bionim and the 19, 20 bionim. Is there a reason why, could you just go over why it went from 785 to 1.1?
Tell us the number again.
I'm sorry, under services, it went from 785, 785K to 1.1 million. I was curious what that increase was.
Stage 100.
So part of that has got to be the human service, or, no, because we transfer human services, never mind.
I am not sure how that was aggregated. I've been more in the weeds. I can mention two consultant contracts that we have, and these will be, you know, short-term. One is, you may have heard that Corps of Engineers has funding to do sediment sampling in the navigation channel, and so we are proposing to work with the same consultant that helped a few years ago from Anchor QUA, QE8. And so that is, that is a new line item or a new task under consultant services. We're hoping, and if not by the end of this year, then early next year, to have a new franchise agreement with Puget Sound Energy. And we've budgeted, again, not a lot of money, but some for a, to be able to use that energy reliability expert firm. When those annual reports come in about reliability across the different circuits, we'd like to have their help in deciphering those.
We're also going to be, the incubator's consulting services are in this line item, too, which is a new line item. But we'll get you the more detailed breakout, just so you know.
Councilmember Curtis.
So are we going to discuss human services in more detail here or in the city clerk budget?
In the city clerk's budget.
Is the GIS under this, which, where is that piece?
It's in the finance budget, coming up.
Coming up, okay.
Great, thank you.
Want to keep going?
No.
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 I had another question about this one, too. Because I didn't know where the other one went. So I know there's a lot of restructuring, too, of staff, and I just, how many, in this new proposed budget, how many direct reports do you have now, Rob? Or are you being, because I think there's more direct reports now.
Getting a net increase of two, some...
Right.
Yeah, because I...
Public Works.
I had John, I still do, and then I'm adding, no, and I already had Jennifer. Well, so if you compare to when I had the Public Works Director...
Right.
That's a net increase of two direct reports.
Two, right, so how many is that total?
I don't know.
It's a lot.
Five, six, seven, eight, something like that. Probably about eight.
Okay.
All right.
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilmember Smith.
Nancy, do you know the approximate amount of the analysis contract for the sediment material? For our analysis that we're, you said we're hiring some...
I believe we're allowing about 30,000. I'd have to go back and look for...
That's the right number.
Yep.
Yeah, 30,000 per one year.
So are there other expenses also associated with that that, because I know we just talked about in our legislative agenda last week about the dredging, and I'm just curious if there was other, because I know there was, the Corps was paying for a lot of it. I didn't know we had a $30,000 expense on that end of it. I'm just curious what else is...
And we may not need all of that, you know, when all is said and done. There are no other expenses for the city for the testing.
Okay, thanks.
It looks like items 10 and 11 are crossed in the agenda. So, next should be staff report.
Check your boxes before you go tonight. And you have two city council meetings next week, one on Monday, one on Tuesday. That's all I have.
Councilmember Reports Initiatives. Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, I forgot to write it down, so I don't have anything.
Councilmember Marshall.
Speaking of local and regional other entities and all that, if anybody's interested in the WR8, are able to make that, those meetings are during the day, my workday, so looking for somebody new to pass the torch to.
That's always a struggle to get WR8 covered. Okay, Councilmember Curtis.
I have two things. Went to ETP last week, and they, one of the discussions was the three-week SR99 closure, and they explained why it was necessary to actually be closed for three weeks, because they have a little building to do on each end to make things connect upright. And they had a really great six-page handout. Has anybody seen this come through their email? If not, I'm thinking maybe we could scan it in and send it to people. It was really great, I thought, a great summary. So if I give it to the clerk.
I'm sure we can get that from staff from ETP. I'm sure they've got that.
And then the second thing that I'm going to let Nigel do is the legislative priorities for ETP. And then the second one I have is simple and yet a little emotional on my part. So I'm going to make a request that in the future, people don't refer to me as Dr. Curtis, but refer to me as Councilmember Curtis. And the rationale is that while I'm still a doctor, there are other people on this council who are doctors as well. I stopped practicing medicine actively a year ago in September, and I've made a decision, the computer killed me, so that's why I'm not doing patient care, and I let my license lapse, and I'm not doing my CME, and so I'd prefer just to be Councilmember Curtis.
All right. Councilmember Shrubnik.
Nothing to add.
Along that line, Alaska Way opened today. The old Alaska Way under the viaduct is no more. It's now back along the waterfront. Councilmember Danuski.
Nothing to add.
Deputy Mayor.
So, yeah, I appreciate Councilmember Curtis reminding me, because of this late time, about the legislative agenda from ETP. So at last month's meeting, I was asked by the chair, oh, Councilmember Bounty Sanders out of Woodinville, to work with a group of folks to put together a legislative agenda for ETP. We just tonight finalized, kind of put the last little finishing touches on it. So once that kind of comes out officially, I'll forward it over to you guys, and if you have any major heartache or any red flags raised, let me know. There's nothing particularly controversial on it. It's essentially last year's ETP legislative agenda with a couple of minor tweaks. But again, if you see any red flags, let me know. We can get that adjusted at November's meeting before we finalize it in December at ETP, so look for that in your inboxes.
Couple things. Somewhere, somehow, 61st Street Bus Stop is being closed. At least that's what's going on in Uplake. The Uplake Neighborhood Association sent us a letter, and they are bound to determine that bus stop is going away, which nothing could be further than from the truth. Can we please tell what we can do to stop this rumor? But the bus stop's going away. It's going to continue.
Yeah, I know. It's a social media thing. It's got a website.
If anybody has the opportunity to talk to anybody in Uplake, Gunderson, Shannon Gunderson, I guess, is the board president now, but if anybody knows anybody...
Oh, I know her.
It would be nice to let them know that bus stop...
If you go to the bus stop, there is a social, I mean, Becky left, but there is the link to the Facebook group that's promulgating this, and I am so not into social media, but if somebody could just, like, deal with it.
Which Facebook group is it?
It's like, it says 61st Bus Stop 522 in the name. It's some long name.
I mean, I saw it circulate on Nextdoor, and I, you know, quelled it down a little bit, but...
It's there. If you physically go, it's all over the bus stop.
Okay. We're not getting rid of it. It's not going away. It's not going away, despite what this... As you heard last week, ballot locks are moving along, they got the 13 million, they're spending it, they're doing, getting the work out to bid, and next year's budget is only 1.5 to keep up with the current schedule of getting the locks regoing. The ask is smaller this year. I had the opportunity to meet with Councilmember Lorna Gonzalez from Seattle, along with Amy Wallen, the mayor of Kirkland, and Nancy Vakas, the mayor of Auburn, in talking about housing, affordable housing and homeless housing, and what we're all doing in Seattle. Lorna Gonzalez wants to work with us. I'm not sure what's brought on this change, but you're welcome. It's nice to work with that instead of continually having... Well, I have no further business. We are done.